Aloha Pumianakaku, the June 26, 2024 Neighborhood Board Number 34 meeting is called to order. Welcome to our Makakilo Kapole Honokai Hale community forum. My name is Anthony Makana Paris and I serve as your board chair. As you can see, I'm on WebEx tonight because I currently have my second dose of COVID and I don't want to share it with you all. So, let's get going with the festivities. We are holding a hybrid meeting online and in Kapole Hale Rooms A and B. Order and decorum, if you wish to speak, please raise your virtual hand or actual hand in person and wait for the presiding officer to recognize you before you speak. Please introduce yourself and only address your comments to the video. If I missed any hands, we'll have Logan, our Neighborhood Board Assistant, assist us. Speakers have up to three minutes to comment on any items and those giving reports this evening have up to 10 minutes. The presentation materials are circulated and available in the Neighborhood Board Google Drive and the link is on the agenda. Please remember to silence any electronic devices in person and keep yourself muted when not talking on WebEx. This is our community forum, so everyone is asked to engage with the spirit of aloha. Be free to vigorously debate the items. Remember to treat each other with respect, especially when you're passionately advocating. Let's honor each other and keep to the allocated times for speaking and collectively finish our forum in a timely manner. Are there any questions on procedure before we get going? Hearing none, I ask Logan to do the role, please.
Bosler.
Here.
Dudley.
Carrera.
Kahela.
Khan.
Lindstone.
Singleton.
Tala.
Paris.
Hill.
We do have Korma at this time, Chair, with seven of nine members present.
Thank you. First off, we go to our city monthly reports and seeing if Honolulu Fire Department is in person.
Good afternoon, everybody. Kevin Carvalho, firefighter at Honolulu Fire Department Station 40, which is in Kapole. I'm gonna go over some statistics here. The statistics provided below represent a confirmed number of incidents in NHB's geographical area for the previous month, which is May. Should you have any questions, please email hfdsscommunityrelationsoffice@hfdnhb@honolulu.gov. For fires, structure fires this month, of month of May, we had zero. Wildland and brush, we had two nuisance fires, which is fires that include rubbish fires that are not structure or vehicle fires. We had six cooking fires. We had one activated alarms with no fires. We had 11. As far as emergencies, medical emergencies, we had 209. Motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, we had one. Motor vehicle crash and collisions, we had seven. Mountain rescues and ocean rescues, both zero. Hazardous materials incidents, we had three. Fire safety tips and announcements. Our fire safety tip we go over is power outages. What is a fire prone with a year-round risk of wildfire? Hazardous weather conditions, especially during hurricane season, which is June 1st to November 30th, will increase the risk. The HFD encourages everyone to proactively protect yourself, your family and your property through advanced planning, understanding and preparation. In the event of a power outage, remember these safety tips. Build a 14-day disaster supply kit. Take an inventory of the items you need that rely on electricity. Plan for batteries. There are alternative power sources to meet your needs when the power goes out. Know your medical needs, all your devices and refrigerated medicines. A general list is available online at honolulu.gov/DEM. Using appliances during power outages. Avoid carbon monoxide poisoning, so your generators, camp stoves, charcoal grills, et cetera, should all be used outdoors and keep them at least 20 feet away from the windows. Turn off or disconnect appliances, equipment or electronics that may be damaged during possible momentary power outages and spikes. For more tips and detailed information, you guys can visit ready.gov/poweroutages. Starting July 1st, the Hawaiian Electric Company, HECO, will commence their Public Safety Power Shut-Off, which is abbreviated as PSS program. It's gonna reduce the risk of, their plan is to reduce the risk of wildfire. As one component of their three-phase wildfire safety strategy, HECO may preemptively shut off power in identified high-risk areas during periods of forecasted high winds and dry conditions. The program is being utilized as their last line of defense to keep communities safe and may result in extended power outages. A PSS could last several hours or even up to several days. The HFD and HECO will continue to work with Board of Water Supply and other city, state and federal agencies to lessen any impacts from a PSS. You guys can visit whineelectric.com for more information on PSS. Thank you.
Mahalo for the report. Are there any questions or comments from fellow board members? Are there any questions or concerns from the community at large? Okay, go right ahead. Transportation Chair Mick.
Said, uh, there's one person, a pedestrian injured.
You had mentioned that you said there was one pedestrian injured. Do you know what that location was at?
Uh, I don't have that information on specifics, just generalized.
Because in particular, I'm interested in whether or not it's Makakilo Drive.
Yeah, I can't, I can't really quite tell, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the community at large? Okay. Hearing or seeing none at this time, oh, thank you so much for the report and let's go to Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening, Chair, board members, members of the community. Chair, hope you get better soon. Corporal Big with the Honolulu Police Department District 8 Community Policing Team. With me tonight online is Lieutenant Carrera, Sergeant Moroka and Corporal Teichman. I do have your stats for May. In May, we had 29 motor vehicle thefts, 12 in our area, 23 burglaries, 9 in our area, 169 thefts, 68 in our area, 45 unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, 16 in our area. There's a total of 233 citations issued, total of 6,899 calls for service. There's 2,186 in our area. I just did wanna mention that this past weekend, we did outreach in the Kapole Community Park area where we, the Community Policing Team went out and we fed the homeless some hot dogs and chips and water and stuff like that in an attempt to get them to speak with some of the social workers as well as for us to identify some of the members in the community that are living there. We did get a couple that were able to qualify for the free phone programs. Hopefully that'll help get them some communication devices so that outreach workers can actually work with them and get ahold of them. Other than that, I'm open for any comments, questions or concerns.
Mahalo for the report. Are there any questions from fellow board members? Any questions or comments from the community at large?
Hearing or seeing none, thank you so much for the service and thank you for doing the outreach to our houseless community members.
Sandra had a...
Yeah, we do have one hand up, Chair.
Oh, where's that one hat?
Sandra.
Sandra Jamora, go right ahead.
Yes, hi, thank you, Makana. Corporal Pagan, I had heard that the Kapole Police Station was being used as the all-purpose jail site for, for, I don't, I'm not sure of your language, but basically booking people and then when they were released, they were just released there in Kapole, resulting in abundance of homeless people in our park. I was wondering if this was still going on, if, or, or, you know, if, if there were potentially plans to give people rides to back where they were picked up from? Or is this something that's gonna be a long-term practice?
Thanks, Sandra. Actually, the, where we were actually booking them, everyone at the Kapole Station was actually about a year and a half, almost two years ago. That, that was only temporarily while they were renovating and fixing the main station. That is done, so everyone is being booked in the appropriate stations and locations now. We, we do believe that at the time when we had a situation where we were booking them in our area, once they were released, not all of them were actually leaving. What we have found is that a lot of people are coming to the Kapole area because, you know, enforcement all over the island is being done and they realize that there's a lot of resources in the Kapole area. You know, they have medical, now with the VA, we have restaurants and stuff like that. So, you know, again, without trying to sound cold, you know, the one of the things that we've found that continues to bring the homeless to the area is when people continue to offer them food at the 7-Elevens and the stores and stuff like that because it makes them stick around in that area versus them going somewhere where someone might give them food somewhere else. Again, I'm not telling people not to, just something people should be thinking about with feeding the homeless and stuff like that and providing food. But yeah, as far as them being booked at the station, that's, that's, the only ones that are being booked are the ones that are being arrested in the EVA 2 Y night area at the moment.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you about that and sorry I missed your hand earlier, community member. Okay, any other questions for HPD? If seeing no virtual hands or in-person hands, thank you very much for the report and keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, now let's see if we have Board of Water Supply with us this evening. I don't see anyone online or in person coming to the microphone, so let's go now to Deputy Director Keit Suzuki.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Deputy Director of Land Management, Keit Suzuki, as the mayor's representative. Let's see, let me start with the skyline ridership. It's a little bit down in May, 91,118. That compares with in, in, that was for me. For April, it was 95,000, so that's over a 4,000% drop in ridership, but it's, it's kinda hanging around in the 90,000 per month. Secondly, a couple of announcements. One is actually hot off the presses, half off the press. I just received this and it has to do with the city and county of Honolulu's bond rating. The city and county of Honolulu announced on Wednesday that it maintained exceptional AA+ credit ratings for its scheduled July 2024 general obligation bond sale. Both Finch, Fitch Ratings Inc. and SP Global reaffirmed their existing A+, double A+ rating, which they will look based on comprehensive review of the city's finances and credit worthiness. This remarkable achievement highlights our city's robust financial stewardship, prudent fiscal practices and the confidence investors have in our long-term stability, said Mayor Rick Blantari. The other thing that I wanted to just bring, bring to your attention and I think probably everybody knows about it, but the city has now, now a new department. It's the Ocean Safety Department, where lifeguards from the Ocean Safety are no longer part of the Department of D E S, D H E S D and instead they're their own department. There are about 270 water safety officers that staff 42 lifeguard towers and they are now their own department. In, the voters will be given the opportunity to determine whether or not a commission, similar to the Fire Department or Police Department's commissions, would be set up to oversee the new department. That's the news that I had. And I had one homework and it dealt with the holo cards. And the question was, is there another way for minors to have their holo cards replaced? Besides their parents going to Kapalama City Satellite City Hall? Can these services be offered at Kapole Hale? A resident reported a high school junior has been unable to attend school for over a month because her bag and holo card were stolen and there is no alternative way for her to replace her holo card due to her parents working full-time and not having time to come to Kapalama Satellite City Hall. DTS, the Department of Transportation Services, so the response is the Satellite City Hall staff offers limited services as they do not work or operate directly with DTS or the bus. As a courtesy, they have agreed to issue first-time senior and youth cards, but do not accommodate any replacement cards. The administration required for the replacement is best handled through the Transit Pass Office. So I'm sorry, but it appears that there's not, at least at this point, the opportunity to replace your holo card at Kapole Hale. That's all I have. If you have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to entertain that at this time.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes board member Moon Kahela.
Sergeant Chair, thank you, Mr. Suzuki, for your report. Recently, it's been noted on TV that the United States Navy has handed over an abundant amount of acreage back to the city and county. And just recently, they found out that they then they could anticipate to include EOD armaments and all the... Wasn't there, wasn't there an opportunity for whoever's in charge or involved in this committee takeover to ensure that there was no stipulations tied to that award? Or it was just, you know, we're thankful for receiving all that land back without even checking? Secondly, the situation with the young homana, this occurred a few months ago. And it's, and it's something that we was hoping to have addressed so the person can get back on a bus transit or whatever. So, what do you think about that Navy acquisition, sir?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm not personally...
All of it?
I, I'm sorry, you're talking about the Kalailoa Navy land being turned over basically to the city's Department of Parks and Recreation? Is that the transaction you're talking about?
Ah, yes it is, but it doesn't it come from the, your office, the mayor's office?
Oh, yeah, the land, everything was negotiated by the, the city and the land. I think it was basically spearheaded by Laura Thielan of the Department of Parks and Recreation, but that's the land handover that you're talking about, right?
Ah, yes, sir.
Yeah, and specifically, you're concerned about some restrictions or requirements that were imposed on the land? I'm just trying to understand your question.
It was revealed that there's EOD armaments, there's like bombs and stuff like that that could still be in the area. And it was part of the deal when, you know, when it was relinquished over to the city and county. My question specifically, wasn't there a committee should have been checking on this?
You know, I don't, I don't think we're talking about the same transaction. Me, me, you're talking about like unexploded, you know, armaments and those types of things, right?
Yes, sir, that still could be on the property when it was moved over to the city.
Yeah, I'm going to have to do a little more checking. Logan, I'm not sure if you know exactly what property, but I don't think that's a Kalailoa one. Kalailoa, to my knowledge, had some contaminants and, and I believe that the arrangement was that the Navy was going to be responsible for dealing with that, though I may be wrong, it's not my department. But any kind of exploded, unexploded shells and things like that? I, I don't think that's Kalailoa, that's probably, it sounds like Makua Valley or some other place, but I'm not sure. Can, can anyone help me out?
About an hour ago, before I came to this meeting, they were interviewing some representatives who made mention that.
Okay, yeah, if I could get a little bit more clarity, I, I would love to try to get some answers for you, but I'm just not sure which property we're talking about.
Thank you.
If I may, Director Suzuki, would it be appropriate if you could go back and check to see what are the conditions of the lands that was transferred in the Kalailoa region in specific? So the area of former Barber's Point, to see if there's any concerns that we should be noting of? This could be unexploded ordinances, any types of hazards or debris that's still there? Or any activity that's happening on their property that they know of that might be illicit or not authorized? So just a general status report would be very, very helpful.
Yes, I, I, that would, that would definitely be possible, thank you.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions from fellow board members? Any questions or concerns for the, okay, I see Logan's hand up and I do not see who's the question for? Okay, Chair recognizes Mick Farah, yeah.
Yeah, so what I'm looking at here is that there was some land that was transferred to the state and the transfer of the former Navy land in Kalailoa falls through and that was because of things like Ordi Pond and Sinkhole. As the Navy reported, using to dispose of ordinance-related scrap from the late 60s to 70s, the state agency has backed out of a long-anticipated acquisition of land from the Navy. The other one that I was looking at, I think, is unrelated. City takes over 400 acres of Barber's Point. I think that's the one that we were talking about and they're looking at trying to develop the racetrack there. What my question is on that is developing, you guys got the land, but who's gonna be spending the money to develop this racetrack and to run it and manage it? I'd like to know what the budget is to create the racetrack, given some of the needs that we have here in the Kapole Makakilo area. That's a question that I've got.
Okay, great, no, I, I got that, I, I understand the question and we will try to get an answer for you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Because the, the reason why I say is there's a racetrack on other, on other islands and working for the state, the DLNR manages state land to do that. However, there is nonprofits and other people who actually manage and run those particular facilities and I'm wondering if the city's gonna be wanting to take over the development and management of it and what's that gonna cost? So that, that's my question, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions or comments for the mayor from fellow board members?
Um...
Chair recognizes Mikiella Lindstone.
Mahalo, Chair. Just a comment, it's disappointing that their response to the youth holo card and that youth, youth in order to get a replacement holo card, the only way to get it is to go to the Kalihie Transfer Station. It's disappointing that the response is, that's just the way it is. That's, that's disappointing, especially for our youth. If, if you want them to, to ride the rail, it's, it's gonna be a turnoff for many.
I understand.
Mahalo, thank you, board member Lindstone for providing that manao. Director Suzuki, I offer a recommendation to see whether or not in situations similar to the homana, the youngest person that was unable to get their lost holo card, would that individual be able to use the Handy Van services to get to the location they need to be? It's an exceptional situation, right?
Right.
So possibly, if you, if you could inquire, because that's within the, the same system, right? Whether or not they could coordinate with the Handy Van to get a ride to go there, get their renewed thing and they come back?
Yeah, I guess the, the problem that I understood, as I understood it, was that the parent had to be with the child and, you know, the parents work and so, you know, and I guess the hours were not continued, you know, they were typical working hours to come to the Palama Station. So it, it seemed more complicated than getting a ride for just the student.
Ah, I see. Well, hopefully, they can give parental authorization forms or sign-offs, similar to how they get those forms when they go on field trips in the Department of Education. Hopefully, we could figure out a situation where these young people can actually use the services of the city to allow them to, to get to where they gotta go.
That sure sounds like a wonderful solution to me.
We'll try, right?
You know, a power of attorney or author of parental authorization sounds like a simple way of handling it, but we'll, we'll take that back and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the mayor's office from the board or from the community at large? Okay. Seeing none, mahalo for the report and the best of luck working with the Department of Transportation Services to see if we can find out a solution and report back on the Kalailoa lands status.
I will, okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Tupola did reach out to let me know she'll be out of town and her office is not available to be here this evening. So let's go now to the Ompo report from Uncle Frank, Janario.
Yes, at the June Citizen Advisory Committee meeting, it was announced that several transportation-related bills were approved by the state legislature. And the Policy Board approved the overall work program for Ompo. In response to the questions from CAC members concerned about young riders on electric bicycles, with many riding on the sidewalks, Eduardo Kennedy of Ompo answered that they are working on categorizing vehicles. Dalisige of Ompo briefed the latest Transportation Improvement Program, or the TIP, with 80 carryover projects and 12 new ones. Using 2013 figures, I commented that commuting on Oahu is 81% by personal occupancy vehicles, or POVs, 4.7% walking to work and 3.6% by other means, with only 1.1% by bicycling. Adding that overall bike and pedestrian projects cost more than roadway projects and I would again be voting no on the TIP because of the exclusion of completion of Makakilo Drive. The CAC Chair Kathleen Rooney said that my figures were incorrect and the use of POVs is closer to 60... Uh, the CAC Chair Kathleen Rooney said that my figures were incorrect and the use of POVs is closer to 65%. The tip was then approved by the Policy Board with, to the Policy Board with only Mike Oluyu voting no with me. Subsequent to the meeting, I found 2022 figures that showed single occupancy and carpool use of POVs was still 77%, with the reduction due to COVID-caused working from home and not by walking or bicycling, with the latter still only at 1%. These data were sent to you and to Ompo, which did not respond. Uh, Kiana Otsuka of Ompo briefed a state mobility hub study, priority sites on Oahu. The majority of trips on island are short, 30% under one mile, 60% under three miles, and 70% under five miles. Hubs are links for transportation services. They anchor walkable mixed-use communities. Uh, Derek Abe of Ompo added that federal, state, and local agencies partner on hub studies, considering land use along with natural means, open space conservation, airports, and areas in the vicinity of military bases. Uh, Ms. Atsuka then said that the study related to Ompo products for potential federal grants. Uh, finally, at the end of the meeting, a CAC guest, Laura Ruby, again expressed her concern about the proposed bicycle and pedestrian bridge over the Aloei Canal and asked for it to be redesigned. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Uncle Frank, for the Ompo report. Are there any questions or comments from fellow board members? Chair recognizes the Transportation Chair Mick Ferrera.
Hank, I really appreciate you getting to those meetings and getting us that information. Right now, I'm investigating the project that's coming up here in Kapale. Uh, that is going to be on the corner there by Walmart. And whether or not they can build that, uh, because the infrastructure is not in place to be able to accommodate, um, at the Kapale exit. Talked to the governor, he took it under advisement and that it looks to be that they may need to complete the Makakilo Drive, uh, before they can build there because of the traffic load wouldn't, uh, be sustainable at the present Kapale exit. So I've got a resolution that I've drafted and I'm going to be circulating. We'll vote on at some point. But, uh, that's some of the information that I've been able to dig up. Thank you.
Thank you, Transportation Chair, for that manao regarding traffic loads and affecting the new development, quote-unquote Hakukapole, the northwest corner of the villages of Kapole, on the Farrington and Fort Barrett intersections. Okay, um, and as relevance to the, the need, the promise of the government to complete the Makakilo Drive extension. So the infrastructure might cause a delay for that project. Or the lack of the infrastructure, I should say. Okay, any other questions or comments regarding the Ompo report? From the fellow board members, any questions or comments from the community at large? Hearing none. Thank you, Uncle Frank, for your diligence on the report and your continued service of the board as a representative to Ompo. Yeah, okay. With that, now we go on to this evening's presentations. We have two of them and the first up is a constituent report on Hakukapole by our neighborhood community member Sheila Maderas.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much to the chairman and the neighborhood board members and the community at large. Thank you for allowing me to share the voices and opinions of our community regarding the proposed development of Hakukapole. I'm going to just read the report that I drafted. I was going to summarize it, but I think it would be a disservice to the community members that provided input. So please bear with me. After the Neighborhood Board meeting in April, I conducted an independent community response survey to gather feedback on the proposed Hakukapole development. The survey received close to 6,000 views and 145 comments, generating many impressions. Additionally, I had several face-to-face conversations regarding the development over two months. It was immediately discovered that the Hakukapole development wasn't widely communicated to the communities of Kapale and Makakilo, as most people were unaware of the proposed development. As a resident of Kapale knows, I was stunned that I hadn't heard about this development until the Neighborhood Board meeting. The main concerns raised included traffic, the northwest space chosen for development, concerns about the developers and elected officials, potential options, nostalgic memories, affordability, schools, children, limited resources such as electricity, water, sewage, community street parking, and miscellaneous issues. The two main concerns were the location of the 700 to 900 apartments and the expected increase in traffic congestion once they are built. This traffic is expected to add to the already busy roadways of Ki'ala Nani Street, Barrington Highway, and Fort Barrett Road, which turns into Makakilo Drive and has only one road off the hill. So this is a great segue to what my, um, Mike had, Mick, I'm sorry, had added. Most feedback acknowledged the need to construct generally affordable homes due to the inflated housing market, but expressed concerns about its location. During my information gathering, I discovered helpful information from a former Village of Kapale board member about the history of the location's choice, traffic study results, and decisions to address the potential traffic issues in the early stages. The former board member of Villages of Kapale stated, "I served in various positions on the VAC Board of Directors and multiple positions, including Villages of Kapale President from around 95 to 2015. The Northwest Corner has always been designated by Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation for affordable housing, with ingress and egress being only in on Ki'ala Nani Avenue, not on Barrington Highway or Fort Barrett Road. However, like most things with the state government agency, HHFDC was extremely slow to proceed. The Veterans Care Home was not part of the NY and Northwest Corner Plan. However, I am pleased to see the Veterans Care Home as a veteran. The Makakilo Drive, Fort Barrett Road, and Barrington Highway intersections by chilis have always had a significant traffic. In the 90s or early 2000s, the Villages of Kapale contracted with Dan Burden, a national traffic expert who was a traffic consultant to the city and county of Honolulu, to conduct the traffic study in that area. Burden, a consultant to more than 400 American cities, recommended roundabouts throughout the Villages of Kapale. However, state traffic authorities disagreed, instead placing traffic lights throughout the Villages of Kapale. Who has ever seen a traffic light stop? Someone who runs a traffic light. Unfortunately, Burden could not recommend a viable traffic solution to the Makakilo Drive, Fort Barrett Road, and Farrington intersection beside the existing traffic lights. It's interesting how Fort Barrett Road has been mishandled, especially when recent improvements that will likely have to be undone or redone to make future improvements. Frankly, with the high level of traffic, anyone with common sense would quickly conclude that Fort Barrett Road should be a minimum of three-lane road, center portion for right and left turn lanes, and preferably four lanes with two lanes in each direction. Another constituent highlighted his frustration. Unless the city fixes the infrastructure and traffic first, they always seem to do so years later. The roadways in Kapale are unable to handle the current traffic flow. There are only two lanes in each direction and in some areas only one lane each way. And there are no pedestrian sidewalks or bike lanes. This poor planning by the city, which had envisioned Kapale as a second city, is now causing issues with the increasing number of homes built between Kapale and Waipahu, leading to even more traffic. Our council representatives need to address this by planning for roadway widening and adding more roads to and from Kapale. Koalakai Parkway is an excellent example of decent infrastructure, while the city and county neglect much-needed upgrades for Kapale's roadways. This constituent expresses the need for openness and not more development. The openness and pleasant atmosphere we enjoy in Kapale will be lost if this project continues. We don't all have to resemble Honolulu. And even with the second road off the mountain, there may be a better, maybe better ways than a north-south highway into Kapale. I'm concerned that, that increased traffic will now affect us rather than pro-city as it currently does. I also worry about how this will impact Campbell and the Westside traffic, which none of us want to experience. Many people share concerns about traffic congestion and location, believing we should prioritize repairing existing infrastructure rather than building more. The proposed construction of 700 to 900 apartments is expected to increase the number of vehicles in the area. A resident living near the veterans' home expressed frustration about the problem of excessive vehicle parking in the community, mainly due to multi-generational families only more than two vehicles per household. They fear that accommodating 700 or more additional cars will exacerbate the issue. The developer mentioned building an underground parking structure. When asked about parking plans, concerns were raised about the absence of an environmental study regarding the construction of an underground parking facility and its potential impact on waters, water sources, especially in an area prone to flooding. Additionally, there are worries about exhausting emissions from the subterranean structure affecting the surrounding community, including the veterans' community. Given that the available land for development has been reduced to 20 acres from the original 27, due to the presence of the veterans' home on seven acres, the location is considered less than ideal for such a development. Furthermore, the community has been consistently asking whether the developer conducted a community survey. And if so, when was it performed? When the developers presented their proposal for Hakukapole, a constituent who attended the Neighborhood Board meeting stated, "Developers are constantly dropping the ball and many people raise this concern. The way those men presented their ideas sounded like a snake oil salesman. My notes highlight how many questions were asked that they conveniently had an answer for, but weren't in their initial presentation. It makes me uneasy when we have to pull answers they already have. Some have asked whether the developers researched other thriving affordable communities on the mainland, such as the Summerland Communities in Las Vegas or places where Howard Hughes Corporation had influence. They argue that Hakukapole's results from poor planning and believe the developers do not care about the community. They are concerned that the developers will build without considering our concerns, leaving the community to deal with the consequences of their fast-profit development. Unfortunately, this development style is typical in our beautiful but limited land and lucrative state. A resident of Kapale discussed the second city plans and potential impacts. The denial of Hakukapole could affect our construction workers, creating a double-edged sword. It's beneficial for the community but detrimental for the construction workers. Kapale was designed as a second city with a 20-year plan to build more houses connecting Eva and Kapale. Ho'opili marks just the beginning of this development, with the entire area, including Kalailoa, set to be developed. Politicians and developers seem primarily concerned with making money for themselves. While construction workers may agree that it shouldn't be built in this location, they still need to provide for their families. The reduction of open spaces is a concern for many who cherish the nostalgia of former Westside without the excessive development of homes and businesses. Open spaces are being taken over in the name of affordable housing, which often ends up being affordable only for transplants or foreign mainland investors. Kapale is meant to be the second Honolulu, so development is part of the plan. Unfortunately, urban development on this island is never planned with foresight or thorough thought. It is all about money and profits for developers and politicians and the middle class who likely not be able to afford these supposedly affordable homes. The nostalgia of old is remembered by many who grew up in Makakilo, when there was little to know Kapale. A resident shared, "I was raised in Makakilo and I remember when sugarcane was only available in those areas. Can we not have a space with more greenery and trees to break the monotony of excessive buildings and sprawling shopping centers? Instead, how about beautifying our neighborhood with new well-lit park or community center with a stage similar to Kapiolani Park or children's playground or a place for older people to enjoy and include neighborhood security to make sure it's safe? Reflecting the past living, reflecting the past, living and housing affordability is noticeably different in today's housing market. Developers often use the overused and under-delivered term of affordable homes, which in reality doesn't mean, meet the criteria for lower-income families. This is where their marketing is misleading. Several issues with affordability of Hakukapole's development of affordable apartments have raised substantial doubts about its claim. A resident who attended the Neighborhood Board meeting stated, "When the phrase 'levels of affordability' was mentioned, I expected to hear the specific level we are targeting for this project. Unfortunately, we didn't receive an answer." Several residents shared their thoughts, with one person pointing out that the so-called affordable homes in Ko'ra Ridge are costly. It's interesting to see how the definition of affordability varies in different regions, particularly in places like Hawaii. The situation where people outside the area buy what is considered affordable housing, thus affecting the local housing market, it's, it's significant. Specifically, the Ko'ra Ridge development, which was initially promoted as a cheaper option, now offers homes at prices in the million-dollar range. This change raises questions about the true affordability of housing projects for residents, including Hakukapole's affordability once the dust settles. The issues of natural and manufactured resources, including water, electricity, and sewage, were also reiterated. Following Governor Ege's decision to halt gold, coal shipments to the island and close its power plants, Hawaiian Electric has struggled to supply power to the entire state, using only renewable energy sources. As a result, the state is facing consistent rolling blackouts and projects in Kalailoa are being delayed due to hico's difficulties in providing power to that area. Despite these challenges, a proposed development in Kapale is being proposed to support 900 more dwellings. Make this make sense. During the Neighborhood Board meeting, a board member raised a significant concern regarding the developers' plans for waste management, especially in light of Waimana'los landfill's current state and its impending relocation of the Westside. The board member asked, "Where are all the opala would be disposed of?" Highlighting the importance of this issue given the landfill's history of being overwhelmed. Concerns about water and electricity supply were also brought up, emphasizing the need to consider these resources in development plans thoroughly. In response, the developers assured the project would be executed in phases, suggesting that the impact on resources, including waste management, would be minimal. However, this response reflects a need for prior consideration of these critical resource issues in their proposal indicating a potential oversight in planning process. A resident re-inquired, inquired about the availability of solar panels for the apartments. The developer confirmed that all apartments will be equipped with solar panels, as the state requires for all new homes. How will the inclusion of solar power impact the cost of affordable units? The developer's answer wasn't clear. Water, electricity, and sewage represent significant constraints for our growing community alongside education and healthcare support challenges. A young mother from our district has brought up attention to this, these pressing issues, especially highlighting concerns about the capacity of our schools, the shortage of teachers and doctors, and the overall availability of essential resources as the city expands. Schools are currently operating at their maximum capacity, which raises the urgent need to build more educational facilities and recruit more staff. Additionally, the lack of healthcare professionals further complicates the matter, is resulting in extended wait times for vital services such as baby wellness checkups. This situation underscores the stress on our local infrastructure. As our city grows, it becomes increasingly crucial to address these challenges, to ensure that the community adequately met and to preserve a high quality of life. The community's heartily efforts to address the housing crisis. And it's important to note that the Kapale community plays a crucial role in a master plan to tackle this issue. As we move forward, we must give careful thoughts, planning process, and the potential impact of the proposed Hakukapole development on the last remaining and highly significant undeveloped property in the Villages of Kapale master plan, as well as it affects on the surrounding communities and existing resource. as well as it affects on the surrounding communities and existing resources. In addition to addressing concerns about traffic, location, limited resource affordability, and developers' lack of due diligence, there were also cheerful and promising ideas for potential developments in that area. The community's vision for the space would replace Haku Kapole's development with Le Po'o Kapole, the flower crown known as Le Po'o, symbolizing mental health support and aligns with the vision of Le Po'o. The community's mental health space will offer a variety of supportive activities. The community proposes an alternative to the seven hundred to nine hundred apartment development plan. Instead of the apartments, they suggest creating a community park, garden, and arts building, offering youth work, training, tutoring, music rooms. The community envisions a youth center with facilities for sports practice, such as virtual soccer, baseball, and golfing. Additionally, they propose including music rooms and a large community hall for holding festivities. The community also desires more open space, parks, and recreational areas. Specifically, they would like to develop the northwest corner into a large park with walking, jogging paths and facilities for various sports activities like basketball and soccer. The park should have an entrance exit next to the VA Care Home and Kumuiiki Neighborhood. In conclusion, the proposed Haku Kapole development should be carefully reconsidered in its suggested location near the Veterans Home. A significant portion of the community has expressed overwhelming opposition to the development, citing valid concerns such as the unsuitability of the location, potential increased traffic, doubts regarding affordability, limitations in local resources, and overall congestion. Additionally, community members have raised issues regarding the developer's communication approach. I'm confident that a more extensive survey would reveal even stronger opposition. As a resident of Kapole, I urge the neighborhood board to explore alternative community-driven solutions such as Le Po'o Kapole for the northwest area we share with the Veterans Home. Thank you. Could you show the slide? So this is what they proposed Haku Kapole to look like? And next slide? This is what the community would prefer in that space. Thank you.
Mahalo, thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from fellow board members regarding the presentation? Chair recognizes Board Member Mick Ferrer.
Thank you for that, Sheila. I've been an advocate for a long time of the second-city concept that Governor Wahai had proposed back a long time ago. We have a city hall, which we're sitting in, and we're not a city, we're not an incorporated city, which at some point in time we were supposed to be, so we could self-determine where our tax money goes, for instance, right? Everything's going to Honolulu, and we're the one feeding them. I found a New York Times article, and I just want to read an excerpt from it, just kind of complement your presentation. It says, "Most of the land where the new city will rise is owned by the estate of James Campbell, a shrewd nineteenth-century businessman who bought vast acreage on the island. The estate hired William Pereira Associates, which has planned several new communities on the mainland to do the same here. State officials have told developers that at least fifty percent of the new city's housing, a mixture of condominium apartments and single-family homes, must be affordable. In Honolulu, that means a price of no more than $120,000." To be really a second-city governor, Wahai said, "It will have to be a community where people live, work, and will be able to afford to live there." He and other officials say they hope to avoid the kind of mistakes that have left the Waikiki area and much of downtown Honolulu a charmless sea of concrete. The goal, they say, is to recreate the look of what they call Old Honolulu, with low-rise buildings made of wood, stone, and coral. It's very important how we do it, said the governor himself, a former urban planner. This is probably our last great planning opportunity on Oahu, so we know we got to get it right, okay? Thank you.
Mahalo, the chair recognizes Board Member Moon Kahela.
First and foremost, thank you, Sheila, for that detailed constituent report. It's very obvious that you did your homework, and you made mention some sensitive items. And thank you on behalf of our community.
Chair recognizes Board Member Mikiella Lindstrom.
I wish there were more people here, because that presentation was excellent. You obviously did your homework, the homework that probably many developers should have done before projects came before this neighborhood board. But to go constituent perspective after constituent perspective after constituent perspective, that was quite powerful. That was just such an excellent, excellent presentation, so much details in there. I'm going to have to watch this again to see it again, but, like I said, I wish there were more people here, mahalo.
Are there any other questions from fellow board members or comments? Any questions or comments from the community at large?
We have a member Ta'ala's hand up online.
Okay, thank you. Chair recognizes Board Member Tiala Ta'ala.
Aloha, Kako. Mahalo to you, Sheila, sister. That was incredible. Just Kako-ing what everyone else said, which is mahalanoi for doing your homework and for coming here and presenting the issue as we all perceive it, as actual members of this community. We get a lot of manao from people who don't live here, don't send their kids to school here, don't shop here. So it's great to hear in this very layered, multilayered presentation, manao from people who live, breathe, and work this side. I also echo what Mikiella said, which is that we need more people to hear this. So if you have a website, or if you're in need of a website, I can help you, because the presentation was incredible, and I'm sure we could get a lot more support. And having lived in this side like my whole entire life, apart from going to school on the mainland, unfortunately, you know, Kapole could have been a really great city, but diversified interests got hold of things, and we are kind of losing the opportunity that Mick referenced when he mentioned Governor Wahai's statement. And it would be really great to see something like Le Po'o come to fruition to try to recapture some of that original intent and give that to our keiki, as opposed to what has kind of erupted and it's dead. So mahalanoi very, very much.
Thank you. Chair recognizes now Board Member Dr. Amy Bosler.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I'm wondering, so Board Member Ferrera said, "I believe that this land is owned by James Campbell, and there are already plans in place for it." I'm wondering what next steps we could do, because I agree, this, I love all of these suggestions so much more than seven hundred units, creating a whole bunch of more problems for our community. But just, in my brain, I always think of what are our next steps? How can we, what can we as a community do to act on this instead of instead of just letting things continue on as they currently are in place?
Chair, thank you, Board Member Dr. Amy Bosler, to provide some brief highlights. The land right now is under the control of HCDA as part of the build-out for the villages of Kapole, which eventually will be transferred over to the Villages of Kapole Association. So the James Campbell estate is no longer involved, to the best of my knowledge. So what can be done right now is engagement with HCDA and with the Villages of Kapole Association. For particular development requirements, we can work with our HCDA representative, Uncle Gordon, if he is here tonight or in subsequent sessions, to ask what we might be able to do. And if I recall correctly, his recommendation was to create a permitted interaction group in order to discuss more freely these ideas outside of the constraints of a neighborhood board meeting. So that is something that we might be able to do as well, okay? So with that, now let's go to Uncle Frank Gennadio.
Yes, Mr. Chair, just a comment. About five or six years ago, I was at a board meeting when it was still in the high school, and I brought up an example of the villages in Florida, where they had three town centers that offered entertainment and retail, and I think they now have four. I mentioned it, and I was followed by the Chamber of Commerce head, I think it was still Karen Polk at the time, and Councilmember Kimberly Pine, who both said, "Those are good ideas." And of course, nothing came of it. I just thought I'd mention that it was a plan, but my idea was to use the twenty-eight acres for a village center. Thank you.
Thank you, Uncle Frank. Let's now go to Community Member Sandra Jamora.
Thanks. So just to provide a little background on the current general manager, I've been an employee there since our center opened in 1996. Just a little bit of of perspectives on this as far as top concerned. What first, if not the first, down there lower? This started in the 1918, like you and this is part of the end plan, getting the seats. Your exit thirty-eight. And part of that master plan calls for the villages of Kapole escaping the rest of the area, escaping party agreement with this. Talking about doubling the right now, and we, these tools one of the most important national revenue to get homes, we are currently homes, last person, we have the opportunities order to support the master plan by Hawaii. So we have a lot of I hate for anyone has been in the works for and kind of need this for the
I'm sorry, we can't hear anything. There's a glitch. Yeah, the person who's speaking, the internet connection is not strong, so it's going in and out. We can't make sense of anything. We would love to, but we just can't hear.
Well, thank you for that, Mikiella, from sorry, Community Member Sandra Jamora, if you would like, he can type in your comments so we can see them. But apparently, people are having a difficulty hearing you at this time. So please try and reconnect with your audio, we'll circle back. If not, consider putting your thoughts into chat. One question, what the chair said earlier, when I said HCDA, I meant HHFDC, the Hawaii Housing and Finance Development Corporation. Uncle Gordon Pang did not get promoted to HCDA. I just got him and Francine Murray mixed up in my head. So the two organizations are critical to our community and their region, but it's HHFDC. And the second note that the chair will put in to this hot button of conversations, I also heard it from Sandra Jamora, was that there is a city master plan. The city master plan was developed in 2007, and since then, development has happened that does not actually comport to the plan designs. For example, in the villages of Kapole, where there was supposed to be a commercial area, more like a village town center, it does not exist. So there are concerns and constraints that exist for that community that was counting on the resourcing from that commercial-owned area to to offset their costs for upkeep for landscaping and roadways and et cetera, which is their and not that of the cities. So this is a very detailed conversation that we are having at this moment, and it's great to hear where everybody's thoughts are.
Can you hear me?
Hello, yeah, we can hear you, Mike.
Yeah, can I make a few comments?
Oh, you can when we call you on you, Mike, because there's other people before you. Is that okay?
Yeah, it's fine, fine.
And also, Mike, can you put yourself on mute? So that we can not hear the feedback also? Thank you. Okay, so we have other community members that would like to provide their feedback regarding this topic, including Brother Mike. So let's get to them, starting with Community Member Patrick Watson. Not hearing from Community Member Patrick Watson at this time. Let's come back to him, and let's go to Daniel Simonich. Not hearing from Community Member Daniel Simonich.
Hi, Chair, I'm here in person, yeah, I'm also online, so.
Oh.
Yeah, a lot of board members, my name is Daniel Simonich. I'm vice president with Michael's organization. We're one of the development partners for this west burner site. We were here just in April, so we came right away, right after we got the formal approval from HHFDC as the selected developers for the site. It's really great to hear community feedback tonight. Developers do want to hear feedback, we take this into consideration. I think it's important to emphasize that even though we did present very conceptual plans back in April, we're still very early in the planning process. So it's going to be two, three years before any dirt is moved. We're going through all the due diligence work right now, all of the steps that every developer takes to ensure that there is adequate infrastructure, that there is adequate capacity, that we are responding to community comments about traffic and all the things we heard tonight. So I'm taking good notes, I know there's other people who are taking good notes. We promised last time we were here that we would come back often, be a part of this conversation, report back, give updates. So we'll absolutely do that with the invite of the board. We can come back anytime, come back next month and try to respond to some of the things that were the comments and the concerns that we heard tonight. I just want to make myself available. I brought business cards, and you know, people can reach out to me anytime, plan a meeting, talk story. We want to be available, we want to be part of this community and do it the right way, so mahalo.
Thank you very much to Daniel Simonich from Michael's Development for being here with us this evening and providing your contact information for people to outreach directly. Before we go to Patrick Watson, Sandra Jamora did provide some comments online, and in essence, she's saying that there was a development plan for the villages of Kapole since the 1980s, that the villages of Kapole is short of homes needed for appropriate revenue goals, and there is a need of assistance from the association potentially to get the city to support taking over roadways that the village is currently actually before. So I understand there's a multi-level conversations going on. Different communities have different say on it. Okay, let's go to Community Member Patrick Watson.
All right, mahalo, Chair, and sorry for that earlier, I was pressing the button, it wasn't turning on, but I just wanted to express my support for Mrs. Madero's presentation, it was wonderful, she did such a good job. I just, I was impacted by it so much because on my way here to get to my computer for this meeting, I was coming from Fort Barrett Road, heading toward Kapole. I was coming from Fort Barrett Road, heading toward Kapole knows, and I was trying to get into the parking lot for the Jersey mics to get a sound. And I had my turn signal and nobody would let me through and I was trying to go like slower so people would go by. And like three people went and I was getting to the point I couldn't turn anymore. And then I I started turning and this person sped up and honked at me. I'm thinking, is that what's happening? I mean, is this kind of the new, you know, Kapole? People are getting so uncool and I've I've been through this because our family home is in Kaimakewa where I grew up. And I watched that neighborhood get taken over and you know, a lot of people from out of state coming in with that whole attitude and spirit. And I would hate to see it get worse than it is right now because it's getting pretty bad, you know? So I just wanted to voice my two cents and thank you so much, Mrs. Maderos for your presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Goes to Logan. Is there a board member wishing to testify or do you have a technical issue?
Oh, sorry, Chair. I thought there was someone on site who wanted to make a comment, but.
Okay, no worries.
Yeah, yeah, come, come on up.
Let's go to the person on inside.
We do have someone online. We do have someone in person.
Okay, let's hold off on them in person unless Brother Michael first online, if he's available, community member Mike.
Good evening. Thank you for the the time. I would just like to remind everyone that this is a state project. This is this whole idea comes from the state. And we have representatives in the House, in the Senate. We also have city council people who represent us. And they should be asking the questions to the proper departments as to what are you going to do with the roads? What are you going to do with the sewers? What are you going to do with the opala? This developer builds to his property line and after that it's not his kuliana. So let's hold our representatives and accountable. Let's get they're they're on this agenda. Let's start asking these people to represent us. And before this project gets started, give us some answers as to how all of this is going to take place. Bring the proper people into the into the meeting. Bring the Department of Transportation. You have the bottom water supply that comes to this meeting every month. Ask that representative for the bottom water supply. What is their plan for this project? What what? How are they looking at this? I just want to make sure that we hold the people whose ideas this was, which was the government, the states, accountable for doing what they're responsible for doing. They're not responsible for building these units. They're responsible for the infrastructure that we as taxpayers pay for, that we have to live with. So that that's my only concern and I appreciate what Ms. Maderis has come up with. But again, I just want to focus on our representation in government to ensure that we are properly represented. Thank you.
Mahalo, Uncle Mike for the Manao and the clarification again that this is a state project and that they have they have responsibilities beyond the property boundary, which the developer does not have the responsibilities for. Okay, going to in person, please introduce yourself.
Aloha Makana Paris, Chair. My name is Deborah Bear Barbor. And I just had a question for the developer. If someone else can answer this is, I know it's a state project for Haku Kapole. But I want to know at what stage it's at. So like, did we already sign the papers and give money so that there are it's a done deal for the development to go through? And so I don't know if anyone can answer that here. I mean, I think the only person would be you. Do you want to answer it? Because I know this is part of a plan years and years ago in the YHA administration. But things have changed and people have changed. The community has changed. And what I heard was some of the projects that were promised weren't done. So I don't see, I kind of would like to know where it's at.
Yep, that's a great question and I'm sure there's going to be lots of questions and we're going to come back with detailed answers and we can have offline conversations too. Where we're at today. So the state last year issued a request for proposals for developers to that fulfilled the the master plan like Sandra presented that's been around since the 80s, since before I was born to build housing and and commercial as a mixed use project on this site to fulfill that master plan vision. Towards the end of last year, the state H F P C, who owns the land, went through that process of the developers who submitted proposals and made a selection. And Michael's organization and a Kennekead development, the two co-developers in this project were formally awarded in March. So we have very, very conceptual preliminary plans at this point. Our goal is throughout the course of this year to kind of refine that based on community feedback to start the entitlement process. So there's no dollars, no money, nothing's been signed yet. It's we're still working to negotiate a development agreement with the landowner. And hopefully next year we'll be applying for tax credit financing. Because part of a big part of the site is affordable housing and the financing from that is going to come from the state as well. So like I said, we're a couple of years out still from anything actually happening. Answers, yeah.
Mahalo for the status update on the timeline of development. Let's go now to our next in persons. Community member wishing to provide a comment or question. Please introduce yourself, Mahalo.
Hi, my name is Cara England and I have a question for Mr. Simonet. Okay, so I did find the project on the governor.hawaii.gov. And you mentioned that it's early, early phases. So I did see that phase one and phase two. And that the first phase, and I just wanted to see timeline of the Haku Kapole's to be ready for tenants by 2029. Is that? Is that still kind of where you guys are looking at? Okay, okay, I just wanted to double check.
Okay, great. Thank you. Now let's go back to our committee member Sandra Jamora and see if her audio is better for any final manao before we get to our next presentation.
Thanks, Makana. Can you hear me?
Oh, so much better. Good job. Mahalo.
I I guess I just mostly wanted to provide that point that this is not a new development. This is the original development when nothing else was here and and that our 4,025 homes that exist right now in the villages need to have more lots built as part of that master plan to get us as close as possible to 5,000 homes. We realize we probably won't get that close, but just an understanding from the community that that we have a lot of responsibilities coming at us in the next five years as the state exits and we have to take over. And this is one of the important tools we need to succeed. But but that this was 40 years in the making. And that's all.
Mahalo, community member Sandra Jamora for bringing up that villages of Kapole perspective, reminding our community members that this is a 40 year old plan that has been in the making for quite a while and that there are aspects of that plan that will impact the the quality of life and and affordability of current residents in the villages because of the maintenance costs that they have to that they're taking upon because of it not being municipal or state roads or the state is no longer going to be doing landscaping. Okay. Okay. Is there any other committee members?
We have one more, one more community member, Chair.
Okay, great. Thank you, Miki. Aloha, welcome.
Hi, thank you for hearing me. My name is Steve Loring. I've been a longtime resident of the villages of Kapole. I moved in in September of 1990. I have previously served on the villages of Kapole Board of Directors for a number of years. I am not on the board now. A couple of things about this. What the general manager is saying is true. The state had agreed, had promised they'd build out 5,000 homes. So we could keep the rates, the dues down for us. I'm opposed to this project also, even though it's probably in the end going to cost me a few more dollars in dues. Because without the additional 900 units, then the current residents will going to have to pay more. That facility, the northwest corner has been everything. It was going to be a church and then it was going to be a retail strip mall and then back to a church. I mean, this has been going on since 1990 that I know of. So how many years is that? Whatever. The other thing is, is these 900 homes. There's a VA care center right next door. That northwest facility should not be a playground for kids to play in because they're going to create noise as are the cars and stuff of the 900 homes. So they need to figure out something else in that northwest corner to produce some income. But not bother the the VA veterans that are going to be going to that home, starting from what I've heard in October. And as far as the state goes, I know this is a neighborhood board for the city and county. But they build the 900 homes. Just like in 1990, when I moved out there, what are they going to do for schools? You know, there's no planning for schools that I know of. Some they've talked about high school at the east, east Kapole over there by the golf course, but I I don't know where that's at. And on Ms. Madero's comment, I know you said you spoke to a lot of homeowners, but no one's asked me. And I've been here a very long time and I will, I would love to have income, so my dues would be would be kept at a reasonable rate. But not with 900 more homes. Thank you.
Thank you, our community member for coming out and sharing our history. And thank you for your past service to our community. The chair recognizes a board member, Tiare Taola.
Mahalo, I just wanted to offer comments regarding the idea of the plan having been in the works for a really long time. So while this plan has been conceived, was conceived like 40 years ago, which is nearly my entire life. We can all agree, looking around, that the powers in charge of making that plan, the original plan come to fruition have been selective in choosing the parts of the plan that they were going to adhere to. And it seems that a lot of the profits were put ahead of things like community feedback. And just the changing times is one of the other community members met, we can't exactly hold ourselves to something 40 years ago. Especially since 40 years ago, we could not have predicted so many things about today's reality, right? So there's this, while it seems simple enough to do the math, well, X amount of homes times X amount of dues times X amount of taxes equals X amount that we have. It's all relative, you know? So this whole like, they will, if we build it, they will come. It's not a cure all. It's not like it's going to make it better. Like, great, now we have more people here and that'll help everyone lower the cost of living. The cost of living is still just going to go up and now we have more people all just living the same amount of hardship now and now there's just more of us in a more compact space. It has become more compact because we decided to just build on top of each other. So I think that's something to keep in mind that we can't just think of it as like a linear equation. You know, that 40 years ago equals what we should do now. That X amount of homes equals much better quality of life for everyone else already existing here. You know, we can't make those like presuppositions. Just want to share that manao.
Thank you very much, a board member Tiare Taola for raising that. I think the community and board members have shared a lot of great manao tonight about our community and what we want to see for our collective futures. And we have heard about plans that have come to be made 40 years in the making, plans that were made in 2007, plans that are still being made right now. But in all of our conversations that we've been having, it was like a community member, Mike, and the last gentleman that spoke really hit on the heart of it, which is what are the regional impacts? Because most of the time we're only talking about the immediate footprint of the project. We're not talking about the quality of life and impacts beyond that footprint, but it's adding to the region. What what about the garbage? What about the sewage? What about the educational infrastructure for the keiki? What about community spaces for people to enjoy and have a good quality of life? And as we move forward, hopefully with our next presentation, we will start to think about ways that we can start to regionalize the way that we're thinking about all of these projects. Because as I've shared before, the regional problems that we have will cause our community to be at each other's on opposite sides of the fence when we're discussing each development project from the D H H O homes that are being built out in East Kapole to the deal in our affordable housing plans around West Oahu and and the build out in Kalailoa. So we still have an opportunity to adjust plans and hopefully together as community members, we can find good solutions for collective interests for flourishing tomorrow that we all are a little bit proud of leaving behind. So mahalo nui for the discussions and before we go to the next presenter, I know community members have asked whether or not there was any feedback from our elected officials. So I would invite any of our elected officials, if they would like to say something regarding this project at this time for the community conversation on this, we'll let that happen before the next presentation. So any of the elected representatives online would like to say anything at this time?
Aloha Chair.
Okay, Chair recognizes Representative Diamond Garcia. Thank you for being here with us and please provide your manao.
Aloha Chair, thank you very much. Sorry for the informal setting here. I'm in DC right now. It's 2:30 in the morning. But I do want to say thank you to Ms. Maderis for that presentation, for hearing some of the concerns from the residents. This isn't my district specifically. The street adjacent to this property is the district line for 42. However, the impact will definitely affect those who live throughout Voka and in Kapole at large. So you know, we're definitely paying close attention to this and working with H H F T C, Voka and the developers on this. And so if there's any further input from the board members or other members from Kapole, feel free to reach out to our office and we'll be happy to be a conduit to those conversations. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative Garcia, for providing that manao and being open to continuing the conversation with us. At this time, I'd like to recognize Representative Kanani Suzo.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm going to leave my video for now. I just wanted to comment regarding this project, you know, as a developer mentioned, they got the contract in April. We were still in session. We're in conference at that time. After session ended, I started doing my due diligence, met with the developer, meeting with stakeholders, H H F T C regarding this. This is a very complex issue. As Sandra mentioned, the project has been in existence for 40 years, evolving over time, different aspects, you know, here we are now and it's not the same Kapole, you know, as they envisioned with Governor YHA 40 plus years ago. So on my website, we have a form that the community can fill out. A lot of community members have already chimed in with this form and via email. It's just repsusa.com and you can provide community feedback. It'll go directly to the developer. In my meeting with the developer, they were super open to having a town hall. They already committed that the community should come out and we could have a town hall potentially in. That the community should come out and we could have a town hall potentially in the fall. So. Stay tuned for that as well, but we are doing our due diligence. Something of this capacity takes time. Um, trying to figure out all the different pieces with DOT, traffic congestion, all of that. So. Um, just know that we are working on it. Um, according to. My conversation with the developer, I'm the only one at the state level who has actually met with them so far. So hopefully. We'll get Senator Gabbard involved, et cetera, as as we go on. Um, I know Councilwoman Tupola already met with the developer. And offered feedback about including services in the affordable housing project generally. So. There's been things happening, especially behind the scenes. And so we're not trying to have any knee jerk reactions. We're trying to do this the right way. Do our due diligence, working with the developers and working with the community. So thank you so much.
Mahalo, Representative Kanani Suzo for your good work and for. Being an elected official who actually engaged with the developer after hearing concerns from our community. With that, um, let's head now to the next presentation from. Sterling Higa. If he's still with us this evening. Sorry Sterling, it went long a bit.
Thank you Chair and thank you Board for making time. This will be less a presentation than I guess a brief conversation. Um, as this board meeting nears its end. I grew up on Oahu, went to Roosevelt High School. Um, spent a lot of time out in Eva Beach on New Year's and July fourth, popping fireworks at my cousin's house. Um, but I live on Maui now with my wife and our four kids and I lead a nonprofit called Housing Hawaii's Future. When Chair. McConna Paris and some of the other members. Uh, were reaching out to me to come to this board in April of this year, uh, one of the topics of discussion they wanted to have was short term rentals. Um, but just based on the discussion we just had, I threw this together very quickly on Google slides. Um, and if I can share my screen, I might be able to. Show something that I think is kind of cool and neat. Ever and I can't do it right now. Um, if you go back, you can look at a aerial survey photos of. What eventually became Kapole and Makakilo from nineteen fifty-one and there is nothing there. And it's only in the early nineteen sixties that you have the first build out of Makakilo. Uh, and then by nineteen sixty-eight, you have a little core in Makakilo, but Kapole doesn't exist as an entity. Um, so you know, a lot of the growing pains of a community, I think, are reflected in this conversation where. You know, for anybody to say they lived in Kapole, they have to have started to live there within the last sixty years, which is. You know, within the lifespan of my mom. Um, so just kind of a fascinating thing to to think about the history of communities and how they evolve and all of the. Issues that go through that. I guess I can give a brief update on short term rentals, probably talk through the Maui context and maybe how that relates to broader issues of community planning. Um, as many of you have seen in the media, the Maui County Council is considering a measure that would phase out. The seven thousand short term rentals on the Minatoia list. Essentially, that will reduce a visitor lodging units in Maui County by about a third. Um, and the hope of those council members and the mayor that have proposed the policy. Is that those short term rentals would then be used as long term rental stock or sold to local residents. Um, and there's a great deal of controversy about that measure. I think that this short term rental issue and the issue that was raised in regards to this last affordable housing. Discussion are related to a broader question, which is what does community. Uh, planning look like and how much input do we have in that? Um, but one thing I would raise as a concern is in every discussion about community planning, there are a lot of groups that aren't at the table. So. Um, just for example, you know, I'm a working father of four. Uh, if it wasn't my job to be here right now, I wouldn't be here. I would be with my family who I'm ignoring to be on this Webex call. Um, working families oftentimes are not able to participate at all in planning processes or community meetings. And there's a disproportionate share of homeowners and people who are more established in neighborhood board meetings like this and in. Community planning meetings. Uh, I'm not saying this as an outsider who doesn't know anything. I've actually visited with thirty-one of the thirty-three neighborhood boards on Oahu. So I'm quite familiar with the neighborhood board system and its representation. I I just raised these as ideas because. If you had asked people in the west side in nineteen fifty, if they should allow development, I'm sure all of the people there oppose development. Um, but all of you live in houses that were developed since then. And if at any point in the progression of development in West Oahu or Oahu in general, we had said, sorry, we are not welcoming new neighbors. Um, well, we wouldn't have homes, right? Um, so what I would say is, as you keep in mind, community concerns and try to have a robust community planning process. You also try to keep in your mind the children or young people who are not able to attend those meetings. Um, you know, the average age of neighborhood board members is significantly older than. Uh, the average age of people uh in Hawaii. Roughly half the population of Hawaii is over the age of forty, roughly half the population is. Uh, under the age of forty. Um, and neighborhood boards typically don't, um, you know, hit that target just right. So. Please keep in mind, uh, younger people who aren't here and happy to have a discussion about short term rentals or any other housing issues you want. Um, or I can send you links to USGS photos of Kapole from nineteen fifty-one or nineteen sixty-five.
Thank you so much, Sterling, for that. Beginning of a conversation with you regarding how we might consider um housing policies as we envision. The second city that is Kapole. So, um, so the Chair will open up. To fellow board members to ask any questions, recognizing Sterling Higa as a leading authority in.
Not a story, just, just a guy, just a guy, thank you.
He's just a guy, um, in my generation who recognizes that most of us cannot afford to live here. Especially if we don't plan for, um, for us now, let alone the ones that we're having, like the keiki below us. So, so yes. Just a guy, um, that cares about housing. So let's open up for conversation. Any questions um that fellow board members would like to to ask? Especially in light of the the current topic that we're discussing, which is Hakukapole. Chair recognizes Board Member Tiare Taala.
Mahalo Sterling, mahalo for your comments. First, you look too young to have four kids. Um, but what you said struck a chord with me because I have six keiki myself, all being ignored right now equally. Um, in order for us to be in this meeting, my daughter has a grad party in a couple of days and I'm supposed to be prepping, but I'm here instead. So I totally understand this idea of how can we have community members be engaged, especially the ones for whom it is going to affect, not just them immediately, but. Their progeny and um all their loved ones, right? Um, I think that the issue isn't only just housing, right? It's all the things that make a house a home, right? So is that home affordable? Is it, are your neighbors cool? Do they hold the same values that they have, that that you have? Do you like the job that you have? Are you just slugging it out? Uh, are the schools in your area? Overburdened or not? Are they attentive to your children? Um, are the people in your community? Getting the help that they need? Everyone needs help and provide a variety of help, right? So, um, I understand that the housing issue is never really just about housing, as is the traffic issue is never just about traffic. Um, these are all systemic symptoms of of larger, much more complicated problems. I appreciate the. Preference you're trying to provide by, you know, having us. Go back sixty years because that isn't a long time at all. But at the same time, looking out, you know, and trying to predict. What? What are gonna be the needs of our community in forty, sixty, eighty? You know, the Hawaiians, our host culture here had a. Four generation thinking model, right? Everything was about not just the generation below, the one below that or the one, it was the one below that, right? Thinking that, that widely and that deeply. Um, and so I do think there has to be some compromises and I do think the community has compromised a lot. There've been a lot of um concerns being brought to politicians, developers. Unions and a lot of times they just get shot down. And it could be very like meager things, like can we have more native landscaping? Can we have more like actually walkable space? I know that it's Hawaii and technically it's. Flat area, but Kapole is really hot, like you know what I mean? So we talk about things like that and that. Of course, can lead us to another conversation about climate change. So I guess my overall comment is to to thank everyone who's working on the issue. Um, and to expect more of these difficult conversations. And my whole thing is if. If people are very biased towards one outcome, we're gonna have a very difficult time getting. Um, anywhere and that the value of community is that everyone has something of value to contribute, right? So I hope that all the people involved, um, especially the ones who stand to lose money. Come willing to like, not just listen, because I've been through to all the town halls and. After a while, it seems like this is a song and a dance. Because they do whatever they want anyways. That's what a lot of the community sentiment is, right? That's why people don't come to these things eventually because they feel like, why? I'm giving up a Wednesday night when I could be with my kids for someone to just go, oh, yeah, well, whatever. Great. Thank you. And then not do a thing about it. There's a lot of that. There's a lot of mistrust in the community from a lot of failed projects, right? So I guess as you're going through these things, um. It's just, you say you're just a guy, but I'm really just, just a girl over here. Like, you, you, you talk to people who can get things done and I'm just in the community. So thank you and keep working at it on our behalf. Thank you.
Mahalo Tiare, um, Chair recognizes Board Member Monica Hale for a question or comments to this popcorn discussion with. Just a guy, Sterling Higa, who cares about housing.
I'll keep my statement short. What type of housing? Development? Does your. Position oversee? Does it oversee? Like state funded homes? Affordable and what is affordable in your definition? You know, adult communities, is that part of your housing policies, et cetera? Thank you.
Yeah, well, that's a good question. So. Housing Voice Future was founded by Zachary Amada and Evan Gates, who were a few college students who were concerned about their generation, Gen Z. Um, essentially being priced out. Um, I'm a millennial and our organization really looks at not just low income housing, but also our workforce housing. So. Think of your middle class, you know, firefighters, police officers, civil servants, first responders, small business owners. Um, people working in the trades, right? Um, apprentices. All of your members of the middle class essentially need workforce housing. Uh, you know, when I did the neighborhood board tour a couple of years ago and came up to. Various West Oahu neighborhood boards. Um, honestly, like in terms of housing, like West Oahu is great. The largest portion of workforce housing on Oahu has been built in West Oahu over the last thirty years. Um, and I think understandably so, there's a community sentiment of haven't we built our share, right? We've housed the middle class. If you look at the developments in Kapole, Eva Beach. Makakilo, a lot of that housing was built and bought by the middle class. The unfortunate thing is we've reached a point where. You know, except for major build outs like Ho'opili and Ko'a Ridge, there aren't like significant large scale developments possible in West Oahu anymore. Um, so we look at thinking about. How do we get to cities that are less sprawling? So mixed use, having residences and commercial spaces located close to each other. Um, so people can get around and have more accessibility. Um, we also think about making better use of our existing city Honolulu. How can we add infill density in the existing urban core so that we don't have to continue sprawling out? And our organization also works on the neighbor islands. Obviously, I live on Maui now. Um, to think about patterns of development on the neighbor islands and making sure that some of the mistakes that were followed on Oahu don't replicate themselves. Um, in some of the neighbor islands as they pursue development, particularly Maui County and Hawaii County. So. In general, uh, you know, cities that are walkable and accessible. Um, where we're not sprawling out and requiring everybody to get in a car to get from place to place. Um, those are the kinds of. Housing we support and we support housing, not just for low income families, but for the middle class as well. Um, because we need to have homeownership opportunities for our young people. Otherwise, they'll leave and go to places where they can buy a home.
Thank you. Uh, next goes to Board Member Mikel Lovinstone.
Mahalo Sterling for being here. It's, it's quite something to have you here at our neighborhood board. I like what you said about. That there's a whole younger generation that's not here, generations that are not here and often are not at the table when projects come. Come to the table and so their perspective is not um being heard. I, we have quite a bit of projects that come here to the neighborhood board. I guess my question is. What are the important questions we should be asking? To these projects on behalf of those who are not here?
It's a good question. Um, I, I would just start by. Recognizing that if everyone in a room is critical of a project, you're probably missing some people. Um, you know, like most of the rooms where a project is being reviewed are just people complaining about traffic and noise and impacts to infrastructure. Um, it's very, it honestly, there is no advocate for housing that's gonna show up because the person that will live in that. House doesn't know that it exists, right? Um, just like, uh, any of you, if you bought in Kapole. When you were younger, five to ten years before you bought and maybe those homes didn't exist, you, you know, you didn't know that that was a project being considered. So it's a basic balance question. It's not even that you can ask a question so much as you have to hold in your mind. This picture of somebody who's in their twenties or even their thirties. And they don't even know that the neighborhood board system exists. Like for, for full disclosure, I didn't know neighborhood boards existed until I was like twenty-five years old. You know, I, I, public school graduate, HCC, UH, I went to Harvard, came back from Harvard with my master's degree. And then I realized, oh, wow, there's like neighborhood board system. I had no clue. Uh, I had no clue there was a neighborhood board in my neighborhood. I didn't know there were thirty-three of them. Most high school students, most people entering the workforce, they have no clue that this even exists. And they're the ones that are struggling to afford the cost of housing and leaving. So. You know, the questions to ask and keep in mind are who will live in this project, right? And just imagine them. And a helpful way to do that is honestly just imagining yourself but younger, right? Uh, you know, if you're a homeowner, imagine yourself before you were a homeowner. And imagine your home before it existed when it was just a field, because everything in Kapole was a field seventy-five years ago. There was nothing there. Literally, I can show you the photo, nothing in nineteen fifty-one.
Mahalo.
Mahalo, um, Chair recognizes Board Member Tiare Taala.
I call my chair. I meant to put down my hand last time.
No worries. We'll go back in live and in person and I believe. Matthew Khan has the mic. Yes, go right ahead, Board Member.
Thank you Chair. Uh, thank you Sterling. Um, we appreciate what you do. Um, we do need affordable housing. Um, I don't know if I have a question, but it's more, I'm trying to really compute what everybody is saying and what you're saying. And we know that there's many perspectives in every age demographic. There's the children, there's the families, there's. You know, the middle age and retirees. I guess there's. As a community, there's, there's a lot of different concerns. That we all share. But I, I think it's just, it's not necessarily about who wants what. I think it's just infrastructure. Kapole's come a long way, so. We're, we're almost at that finish point, like the five thousand cap, right? Wait, um, sorry, what was your name, sir? Steve. What Steve was talking about that we need about nine hundred. More houses to to get maybe cheaper dues or whatever. To me, I look at it. As if, say like, um, your phone battery, when you charge your phone. It takes a short amount of time to get about eighty percent. And then the rest of the twenty percent, it's like. It takes twice as long because the electrons in the battery is like, when initially, they're just like, there's no space to fight for. But as soon as you, you start to get to eighty percent, now they're all packed in there and it starts to get a little harder to move around. In the same way, Kapole is like that. Like we've, we've come a long way since six, the sixties. And I remember when it was, yeah, just sugarcane and it was just real empty. But now that we've kind of developed so much and we have like a. A few open lots to fill up now, it's like, it's so complicated. But now that we've kind of developed so much and we have like a, a few open lots to fill up now, it's like, it's so complicated. It's the traffic, it's the, is, is there enough schools to accommodate the kids? Um, it's not necessarily just, just based on perspectives. There's something about infrastructure and priority. That I think we're having a problem with. We don't know what's, who gets to do what first. Do we need the extension for Makakilo first? Do we need an extra high school first? So I think we all want more affordable housing, especially Gen Z. Cause I got a lot of nephews and nieces that just graduated and they're like, I don't even know if I'm going to live here. Cause it's so bad. This is not affordable. So what we really respect what you, you, you do. I'm just wondering if there's, how do you see your way forward in terms of priority? If you're thinking about building homes?
Yeah, it's a great question. I always use this idea of there are two things in organism, uh, a human, a society can be doing. Uh, it can either be growing or dying, right? The human lifespan, you grow at a certain point, you reach senescence and you start dying essentially. Um, cities, societies, cultures are like that too. There's a period of growth followed by a period of death. Um, when our grandparents were our age, so when Governor Waheh was governor, um, they were investing for growth. Substantial amounts of money into building out infrastructure with the plan to add more people. You know, though, everybody agrees on the need for affordable housing, I would say maybe not in this room, but a significant number of people would prefer that Hawaii stopped growing. I personally think that's a huge mistake. I think that all of the problems of growth and our, you know, the baby boomers are familiar with the problems of growth. That's essentially what their life in Hawaii was like. Those are big problems, right? Uh, I can tell you all of the problems of shrinking and dying are worse, right? The problems of shrinking and dying are there are no teachers to teach your kids. There are no nurses to care for our elderly. There are no construction workers to build and repair houses and infrastructure. There are no civil servants to review plans at Department of Planning and Permitting. Um, we have a rapidly aging population. We have a shrinking workforce. And in communities like the one I live on, on Maui, we've essentially become a retirement village. Maui County is a giant, Maui Island is a giant retirement village. Um, that's what it is. So if we make a decision to stop growing. Which is a decision to stop making homes for young people and have economic growth that attracts young people to a vibrant, growing community. Like West Oahu has been for the last forty years, mind you, right? We will deal with different problems. My personal belief, and I say this everywhere I go, is I would prefer the problems of growth. Um, you know, like the prob, like the problems my grandparents had, I would prefer those problems because those are better problems for me. Uh, than the problem of no teachers and no nurses and no construction workers. Um, that's where we're headed though. That's the trend. And unless we invest for growth. We'll be choosing death.
Mahalo.
Sorry, kind of depressing.
No worries, but the organism example helps us to understand. We, we're either growing or, or dying. Um, the Chair recognizes as a community member coming to the microphone, please introduce yourself.
Aloha, my name is Deborah Bear Barbor and um. I understand where you're coming from. Two of my, well, four of my children have left Hawaii because of the cost to purchase. Housing and one, one was a family of, with two engineers. And they could not, once they started having two children, they couldn't afford to get a larger house and so they moved. Um, however, I think we also have to consider that we are an island community. And if, I don't know if your Housing Future group considers the people that. Come in and raise the prices. Through investment properties, I know that even in Honolulu, not all those condominiums are filled. They're empty. They actually pay people to go in and turn on the lights and turn on water. So that it's like they're not like, so I think there's other solutions that need to be considered. And I think that has to do with housing policies and enforcement of the housing policies. Um, there is an aging community and I think some people have started, um. I think it's the legislature where they're doing um Ohana units. Making it a little more easier for multi-generational housing, which I think is good. And people have already been doing that, but they're making it a little more feasible. Uh, I think the thing that happened in Maui, it's interesting that you're there. That you can participate and see where this is going to go. And how the community can work it out, because I believe they can work it out. Where they have investment properties, they have high-end, um. You know, Airbnbs, not that they're Airbnbs, but you know, short-term rentals. And how are you going to work it out as a community to help the younger people stay in Hawaii? I would love to have my children come home. Cause all my grandchildren are there. So. Um, but I don't consider it as building more condos or building more units as the answer personally. Because those units, even though they say they're affordable. I mean, I know in Kailua, they had, um. They knocked down apartments, which were, you know, pretty old wooden buildings. And then they built these houses, these condos, and they went for like seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for a condominium. And like two bedrooms. Now who, who is that for? You know, there's people from Japan. There's like tons of people from Japan there. There's a lot of foreign people. Maui has mostly Canadians to me, from what I see. So how are these people helping the community? So I, you, you know, and I'm sorry because it's not, it's sort of like our problem. And I'm more willing to work on it and it was, we kind of were naive, like, oh, people are just going to be honest and, you know. It won't raise our rents or raise the, the costs of living or costs of housing. And so we were kind of dumb to me. And now you guys, your age group is left kind of holding the bag. But you have to understand that I'm in the age group that you said was over forty, but I'm a little more over forty. We are with you. We will fight with you and we will help you. So, you know, I don't, I'm, I kind of felt like there's the kind of this tension of like. Oh, you know, we need to grow and we need to get more units and more and stuff. And I grew up on Oahu. And I want to move myself because it's not the same. It's like. It's just Kailua Beach is polluted, basically. Um, you know, it's just. So I, and I know for a fact that it's not, there's units. That should be for local people and that could be used. For those who really want to live here and not just vacation people for like two months out of the year. So I don't know how we solve this, but I'm telling you. My generation, I know there's many people who will help. We will, we want it changed too, because we grew up here. Like Steve who grew up here and it's like he saw everything growing, like it's crazy now. We will help and we want to change it. So what are the ideas that we can have? You know, I know like in New York, they have rent control and all that kind of stuff. I don't even, I don't know what that would mean. But we are a, a island community. We, we can't keep growing, 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 growing. Because it looks like the growth is not. It's not growing what um people have talked about, the aloha. The aloha is getting lost, like that one guy who couldn't even turn into a place without someone like. Jamming, you know, honking at them and like getting all mad. I mean, so anyways, I just wanted to, you know. I'm of the older, over forty and I'm with you, man. Let's, let's change the islands. And get our people, local people back, you know, anyway.
I appreciate you. It's that, that who, uh, album by Jijij generation. So right on. Millennials and baby boomers standing together. And Gen, Gen X too.
Okay, um, let's go to uh Transportation Chair McFerrar, then back to Tiadetala afterwards.
Hi, thanks for uh speaking this evening. We tend to think of housing inside this little box where. We tend to take care of the developers. It's whatever the developers can make us that we can make affordable. And instead of doing it that way, um, I was reading something about a little area in Liberty, Texas. Where manufactured housing is in forty-nine other states. We don't have any here. Um, I had a manufactured home at Lake Berry Estin, beautiful Napa Valley. And that house must have cost me fifty thousand dollars. It was a three-bedroom. Two-bath was nicer than the stick-built house that I had down in Contra Costa County and it was right on the lake. These manufactured homes can be built for sixty-nine thousand dollars. We can have complete communities of these manufactured homes where if people pay space rent of five hundred dollars a month like they do. Or like in Liberty, Texas, they're buying their lots for fifty thousand dollars and for a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. They've got themselves a house and a lot and uh a community. Um, it seems to me like I, every time I've brought it up, I've been shot down for one reason or another. Oh, we can't do it. We can't do it. Oh, the houses themselves aren't that great. Well, I lived in one and it was, it was just as if it was a stick build. It was just that it was built in a factory and brought out to the site and put it on a foundation. Um, I think that is our solution. We've got a lot of land here to be able to do stuff like that on. Um, I think that we think outside of the box of the, the developer and what they can build for us. And we end up taking on um even a pilot project of a community. That we could take all of the beneficiaries off the waiting list and put them in a home. And if they want to live in one, they can. If they want to stay on the list and get a stick built somewhere, um. I've got many friends who have passed on who are on that list. And I just don't see us getting housing for, for folks on this island, doing it the way that we've been trying to do it. And you could say it's affordable, but like she said, it's affordable for who? Um, and people just want to have a place to call their own. If it's a sixty-nine thousand, seventy-five thousand dollar. Uh, manufactured home, it doesn't have to look like a, a mobile home or a trailer. They look just like houses. Um, and yeah, you know, we have houses now, sixty-five percent of them are pier and post, single wall construction. They're not even built as good as what a modern manufactured home could be built. So I know I'm going to get a lot of hate for this, but I think that's a solution that, that we have, that we even have a place down in Campbell. That are building modular offices and all they do is just take the design and like we have Hansador Lumber who has kit houses. I've uh volunteered for twenty-six years for Habitat for Humanity as a site supervisor and have built probably eight houses. Uh, using those kit homes uh for uh people that are beneficiaries in. In Department of Hawaiian Homeland's uh land. So if we actually had uh manufactured homes here, we could create entire communities. Of them and they could be affordable. There's, there's nothing that keeps. A manufactured home, there's dealers all over the, the mainland. Uh, they could be sent over here. We could manufacture them ourselves. Uh, and people could be living in a house for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars because they're doing it. I'm looking at like I made the reference of Liberty, Texas. Liberty, Texas, these are people who are illegal, who've come over from Mexico and have enough money to go down to the manufactured home dealer. Buy a manufactured home and put it on a lot somewhere and uh are paying space rent or buy the lot itself for fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we can do that here too. And um, that's, that's all I got to say. But you know, after listening to all this, I keep this little card in my back pocket and go, well, what about the manufactured home option, you know? And um, I, I think it is doable, but uh. We aren't going to get buy-in from any of our electeds because too many of the developers have. You know, a, a, a hook on them, uh, so to speak. And I've heard everything from, oh, God, but we get, we get hurricanes and stuff like that. Well, we haven't had a hurricane in a long time. We probably will have one. But our single-wall construction pier and post houses will go away. But think about it, how many manufactured homes and even mobile home parks are in Florida? Okay, how many over in Oklahoma, right? And uh Texas and. So I think we got to come to the table and look at two thousand twenty-four and look at the technology that's out there for manufactured homes. And uh, because there's not a huge profit margin for a developer to make money off of, uh, they're not coming here. And they've got lobbyists that keep that from happening as well. So uh, that, that's, that's my two cents is something for you to kind of consider and, and think about. Uh, I think a pilot pro, program where we, we have a community uh with those. Could prove that it's something is doable and sustainable. So thank you for your time.
Uh, a hopeful update for you, uh, Member Ferreira is. On Maui, the Koleiola project is using uh prefabricated housing. From a few suppliers, including Factory OS, which is based in the Bay Area, uh NanoNests and Inova Homes. So that will be the first, to my knowledge, large scale, and we're talking hundreds of units. Of modular housing installed in a state funded project in Hawaii. With the backing of the trade unions that historically have opposed the deployment of modular housing. So I believe that modular housing is a huge part of solving our housing issue. And I think that the urgent need for housing caused by the fires on Maui have caused. Groups that traditionally have been opposed to modular housing to taking a fresh look at them. So I think you'll be hopefully pleased in the next few years to see more projects like that come to fruition.
Very good.
Thank you very much for that.
Okay, now we go to Board Member Tiade Tala.
Mahalo, I'll be faster this time. Thank you, Sterling. I love the um organism metaphor because I'm a biology nut. Um, and to that, yes, things are either living or growing, but I may counter that with the perspective that we could also find balance. So they are neither. They are as they are, as they should be. We reach a potential maximum. And so to find that balance, right, we need to come, as Mick said, with new solutions because. This timidity uh towards innovation that Hawaii has had has not worked for us. I live in DHJL property. I had approached DHJL when I bought at twenty-four years old, some seventeen-ish years ago. Um, with the idea of ADUs, I was a big follower of sustainable architecture, David Hertz, Michelle Kaufman, people who are really pushing that space. And Hawaii just was not on board at all. And now we've come a little bit further with the idea of Ohana housing. But really it's, it's just like, it's the pattern of we have a problem, a problem, a problem, and then we start looking for solutions, right? So going back to your original discussion, your original opener with how can we plan for our keiki who are not even in this discussion? It would be with boldness, but not the boldness of necessarily unchecked growth, right? If we're going to grow, it has to be far more responsible and we have to re-envision responsibility. Um, far better than we've done it so far than those before us have come, come, those who have come before us have done. And I mahalo the anti for offering her comments, um, because it provides us this, this generational perspective, right? And in Hawaii, um, Ike Kupuna, right, looking to our Kupuna for this knowledge, the kuru shura wada's. Um, should be um part of our navigational system going forward, right? And so I mahalo the anti for, for, you know. Expressing her, her, her experience, which I think um is very close to our own experience. If not now, then it could um be that our experience if we don't um. Be more mindful, extremely more mindful and to that point, be more innovative. But I don't necessarily think it's about we have to do this or we. point, be more innovative. But I don't necessarily think it's about we have to do this or we're going to do that. I think it's about choosing something that we haven't chose before, which in my view was balance. So more thoughtfulness, more, um, pride in our kuliana for how we're going to do this. Because as the auntie mentioned, I think what we're getting here at, uh, getting here of those of us who who have lived here and intend to raise our children and grandchildren here is what is the most unquantifiable thing about Hawaii? Is our aloha, right? That's priceless. And if we make it difficult for people to live here because of, we don't have food security, because we don't have emergency plans, because our housing um, is too expensive, because our education system is untenable, then we lose the thing that is priceless and makes us special. And we're just like anywhere USA, which are kind of like what our houses look like, oh, Iren Kapole, right? Um, so I just want to express that, mahalo.
Yeah, if I can just give us a historical precedent and maybe inspiration, I think a lot about who I consider to be the greatest Oahu chief, Maile Kukahie, widely credited with actually instituting the Aho Puaa system and reforming entirely the land use and civil service essentially at the time on Oahu. Um, one of the things that Maile Kukahie created was tremendous abundance that supported the rapid growth of population on Oahu. I think that's where we should look to inspiration is thinking about, you know, we've had chiefs on Oahu who did that. Um, obviously, I don't know if it's recreating the Aho Puaa system because Maile Kukahie himself wasn't recreating a system so much as reforming it. Um, but there's precedent for the challenges we have and also responding to them in a a way that works. And we do have to look back like five hundred years, but you know, what's five hundred years between friends?
Charlie, you have something else to follow up?
Yes, Kako. I do agree with that sentiment. It's something I've expressed in my own advocacy circles that the knowledge that we're looking for is already here. It's already ancestral. It's already passed down, but we have to not see it as antiquated, right? So the Aho Puaa system, which is one of the most ingenious land distribution or, or resource management. That's really what it was about, right? It's resource management systems like ever, um, throughout any civilization. Um, the thing about that is we destroyed our watersheds. That helped to drove a lot of that Aho Puaa system. So how do we get back to that? How do we get to back to love of Ina? That is a value that you kind of have to grow up with. You kind of have to be lucky and it's hard to, to foster that here if the people who grew up with it leave. So I love, um, the idea and I do think that's the answer, but it's, it's very, um, delicate, right? And very layered. So again, thank you for your continued work on this year, but I agree.
Mahalo, um, for our gift, Sterling, a, a last say on final thoughts, uh, what comes to mind is, is as I've served on the neighborhood board, as we've seen these development projects come before us, um, I, I do, I think that the core values of our community have come through uh, with my fellow board members, that we are looking at, uh, for, for lack of a better way of saying it, it's like we, we're looking at the project in an innovative way um, before us to see what can be done well there. Because for far too long, Hawaii has imported its models of development from other places which are not value neutral. Why do we have all of these houses with lawns in front of them that do not grow food? That is not very Hawaiian. It actually comes from the Middle Ages in which we have rich people and there are states growing land to signify their wealth. That is where lawns come from. The concept of being able to be so wealthy that you could wasteland with just greenery. Now, as I've heard over the last, um, few months, when we discussed the potential developments, including at Hakua Kapole, we've asked questions like, are you catching your own water? What are you doing for disaster preparedness? It's like, are you putting in native plants that actually are drought tolerant because they belong there? How are you making sure that there's going to be spaces for the kids? The keiki and that the, the parents need to drop off somewhere else? Can they not just walk down the, the walk down the road in their own neighborhood to go to their daycare? What about Kupuna care? It's like an aging in place. Will these places, we, we expect them to leave? It's like, so our communities, I think, as Tiadetala, board member said, we have the, the wisdom. The question is, how do we make sure that we put in the good policies and provide innovations that, that makes sense for our current context? And, and I'm thankful there are people like you, Sterling, that are willing to hold those conversations, particularly, uh, when you was trying to have those conversations with other housing advocates um, from different parts of our community under the governor's emergency proclamations, like. Because if we do not speak for those that come after us, it's like, and all we're planning for is ourselves, then what does that say about the state of our community? Are we living and growing or are we dying? So, um, I'll give you, uh, final thoughts. You want to, or impressions you want to share with us?
This will take, uh, less than a minute. You know, thanks for the opportunity to share. I think we can only look forward as far as we look back in history. I think we have to look back, uh, primarily to Maile Kukahie, who accomplished three things, land reform, civil service reform and infrastructure development. Um, we need to look holistically at Oahu, but also at our state as a whole and think about how do we ensure abundance and prosperity for our children and for their children. I don't think it means going back to the Aho Puaa system. Maile Kukahie wasn't going back. He was looking forward. So we have to look forward to with the technologies we have, with the resources we have and solve the problems that we share right now. Um, but it is possible. It has been done and it will be done again. And it'll be done by people in rooms like this one who are civically engaged and who are thinking about how all these issues are interconnected. And when there's a critical mass of people like that, then we will have leaders rise up all across Oahu, all across the state. Um, and we'll have these fundamental reforms that we need. So thanks for the opportunity to share. If you want to get engaged with what we do at Housing Hawaii's Future, our website is hawaiisfuture.org and we're on all of the social media platforms at Hawaii's Future. Uh, and you can find my name anywhere and just shoot me an email and I'm happy to talk story anytime. And, and when I'm on Oahu, we can grab, uh, grab coffee or tea or something. Awesome. Have a good evening.
Mahalo, Sterling, and the best to your family. Your Ohana allowed you to be here with us this evening.
Yeah, they're all asleep now and I'm going to go join them. Thanks. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, with that, our presentations are completed for this evening and we are opening up, um, board and community concerns and remarks, starting with fellow board members. Are there any announcements or concerns you wish to bring before our community forum? Seeing or hearing none from the board members at this time, let's open up community concerns, remarks from the community at large. Uh, please come up if you're in person to the to the microphone. And as people are doing that in person, I will start online with well, let's start with, uh, Charlie Calvet and then I'll go to Uncle Tony Gaston, uh, after that in person. So let's start online and then let's go to, uh, direct after.
Aloha, everybody. Hi, this is Charlie Calavee, um, with the Trade Win Cycling Team. Yeah, after all that, uh, talk about your issues in, uh, Kapole, uh, this will be a little bit lighter note, I think. I'm here to, uh, um, discuss or, or bring to your attention an event that we're going to be holding, um, a bike race in Kapole on August tenth. It's going to be a Saturday. Uh, start is seven o'clock and we should finish up about eleven. Um, and like I said, it's a bike race, uh, in a closed course. So, uh, I guess the biggest impact for everybody in that area will be, um, lane, uh, a road closure on Kapole Parkway from, uh, between Kamaha and Manawy Street. So, um, it's about a half mile stretch of Kapole Parkway. Um, and we'll have that closed off with detour, uh, around that area with traffic control. Uh, we have police officers at both ends, uh, helping with traffic. Um, all, uh, residence areas, driveways and, uh, commercial areas will remain open. Access to those areas will remain open. Um, so that area right there is just a, a pretty isolated stretch of Kapole Parkway, so we can close it down uh, without too much impact. Um, we expect about seventy riders will be participating. Um, we will instruct everybody to try and keep noise levels down in the early morning hours there. Um, this is going to be permitted through the USA Cycling and, uh, through the city and county of Honolulu. Um, and I also just wanted to, uh, just point out that, uh, we encourage, uh, the public to come out and watch, uh, the Tour de France starting up this, uh, weekend. Uh, this is a chance to see some, uh, top-level riders, uh, racing, uh, in your neighborhood. So, um, you know, it's a, it's a closed course. Uh, you get to see racing up close and, uh, you know, some of the top, uh, riders in the state will be there. So that's it. Any questions?
Okay, thank you very much for announcing the cycling event coming up. Are there any questions from fellow board members or the community at large? If not, uh, if you're online, reach out to Mr., um, Charlie Calvee.
Yep.
And, uh, please check out our Google Drive on the agenda. The link is there um, for any posted information regarding events, including this one. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go now to Uncle Tony Gaston in person at Kapole Hale, uh, for the Hunt update.
Well, first off, good evening, everybody. Tony Gaston from the Hunt Companies and, uh, what I want to do is, uh, oh gosh, I want to share the right screen here, uh. But I, I did want to give you a quick update on how things are going with the project because, uh, we're getting to a point where we want to open one of the other roadways. And that's going to be FDR. So let, let me show you this screen here. Okay. It's not total, but at least you guys can see this. Um, so on this, this is the overall project and what we want to do now is this is going to be what you see right here. So the yellow arrows are the access that go in and out of the VA clinic. That red barrier on the bottom, what that's saying is there's no traffic going down because we do allow the traffic in and out. Now, the Makai side of FDR, you see the two blue areas. The Makai side, that one has travel going in two directions right now. What's going to happen is we're going to open the Malka side pretty soon. That's going to be open in maybe, um, end of July to, to early August. So when that opens, what happens to the travel pattern, see? So this next one here will show that to you. You're still going to have the yellow arrow, so traffic coming up Kamakila, traffic going down in the Kamakila from the, for the VA clinic. But look what happens to FDR. The two lanes on the bottom will now go eastbound. And the two lanes on the top are going to be westbound. And when you get to the intersection, one can turn and go up towards Costco. The other one can turn and come down. So this is a change. This is going to be the future. This is what it's supposed to be anyway. So it's just a matter of time before we can do that. Still a little bit more upkeep we're going to do, but again, this is targeted for the late July to early August. Okay, so that's just my quick update. I wanted to give you guys any questions?
Any questions regarding the Hunt update?
Yes.
Go right ahead, board member Moonkale.
Thank you for your presentation, sir. Um, how far east will that two-lane run from? What is the tentative direction? I mean, not direction, but distance? It's just going all the way to Fort Barrett Road?
Okay, right now what we constructed is from Kamakila going to Copahai, the very edge of the elementary school. That is the portion that's going to become four lanes. Any other questions? If not, thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you so much for the, the update from Uncle Tony Gaston of the Hunt Companies. Now let's go to a member online, Naomi Kukak. Please go right in.
Aloha, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Naomi Kukak. I'm present this evening on behalf of Simone Petri Enterprises to give the latest update on our Oahu Carbon Sustainable Materials Recycling and Fertilizer Facility project. So when we last presented in February to the board, we informed the community that we would be getting ready to send out our draft environmental assessment for agency review, um, to be approved before officially publishing for public comment. And at that same time, we provided a link to the preliminary draft of our environmental assessment to get early feedback. The most recent update on our end is that our environmental assessment has pretty much completed agency review and it's just awaiting final approval. But to date, we have not received any comments, um, in response to our environmental assessment. So we wanted to take the opportunity to remind the community that the draft document is, uh, still available to review and community members are still welcome to send us comments. So I'm going to be including two links in the chat, one for our website and a Dropbox link, a Dropbox link where the environmental assessment can be accessed along with an email where comments and questions can be sent. Um, I've also sent these same links to, uh, Chair and Secretary as well, just in case I have any trouble adding them into the chat as I was having some difficulty at a previous meeting. Um, so that's just as a backup. Um, but otherwise that's my update for the evening. So, uh, mahalo to everybody and please just give me a few minutes to get those links into the chat, but otherwise if you have any questions, please feel free to send me.
Mahalo for the update regarding the status of the review and providing community information so that they can actually comment if they so wish. Uh, okay, um, are there any others wishing to provide community concerns or announcements at this time? I see Logan's hand up. Logan, who do we got in person? Oh, welcome. Please introduce yourself. Okay.
Hi, my, my name is Cara England again, and I just wanted to introduce myself. I am the new incoming president for the Rotary Club of Kapole. What is Rotary? We are individual volunteers in the community that we're passionate about making things more healthy and more helpful and just having a better community overall. So you're going to be seeing me a lot because I want to know what's going on and also to keep things, you know, be, um, keep my members updated about what's going on in our community. Again, thank you. I have my cards here and also go Kapole. They had a, um, community champions. They wrote about our club in this last issue, so please take a look at it. Thank you.
Congratulations on your new position and mahalo for your civic service. Any other community members? Okay, aloha, welcome. Please introduce yourself. Go right ahead.
Yeah, Steve Loring. I live in the villages of Kapole. I just wanted to go back. I know it's a lot of, um, talk on it. But the, the villages of Kapole is a state project. And they promised us back in nineteen ninety that everything would be built out by twenty-ten. Now it's twenty-thirty and I doubt if that's going to happen. Um, and then when it is turned over, the roads are turned over to the city, not the villages of Kapole. So the city is in negotiation for, um, the, the big issue is the cities, the roads, the inner, the roads inside the villages don't conform to the city's standards. They're too small. So I don't know. I've been off the board for a while now, so I don't know how that's going. All I know is it goes back and forth between lawyers, which costs us nothing but more money. Um, the second thing I'd like to say, um, I know you folks end at ten o'clock. Is it permissible to speak on one of your items that's coming up?
Um, yeah, um, if it's a brief comment, that you're welcome to, um, but keep it to a, a minute or two, please.
Okay. It's on, um, uh, number six, Board Business and Discussion, and it's number E, Motion to Support the Creation of a Overdue Vehicle Motion to Support the Creation of an Overdue Vehicle Registration Amnesty Program for the City and County of Honolulu. Every day when I'm driving around and I look at a stoplight, there's either a car to my right, my left, or in front of me that either has expired registration, expired safety, or both. And I have to pay every year four or five hundred dollars. I'm sure you folks do. I would absolutely oppose any kind of amnesty. In fact, I would encourage the legislature to raise the penalties for it. Okay, thank you.
Mahalo. Thank you very much. Any other community members wishing to provide concerns or board members at this time? The Chair recognizes Transportation Chair McFerr.
Yeah, you spoke about the registration amnesty. I've got an appointment with the, well, I guess it's now the Director of Customer Service since the Deputy Director is stepping down. And another side of that is that there's from COVID to people who have lost jobs, to people that have had hours reduced. And five hundred dollars a year to register a car, I've been lucky enough to have been able to do that. However, I have neighbors who haven't and they depend on their car to get to work. And I look every week in the auctions for abandoned vehicles that the city has to end up spending a lot of money in taking in these abandoned vehicles that people have said, hey, I just can't afford, I'm a thousand fifteen hundred dollars in the hole as far as registering this thing. I'd rather just let it go back to the city and take that fifteen hundred dollars to go buy another car. So in the meantime, the city's having to pay to store it. They try to auction them off. There's hundreds of them that they've got now. And in looking at, I've got a resolution that I drafted for registration amnesty and I could provide a copy of it to you. But what they're looking at is the possibility of, there used to be a five-year program where it'd be five years the car's out of registration, you would reset it to zero. I'm looking at doing only one year of people coming forward and saying, gosh, I'm one, two years down and being able for people to be able to register their vehicles and get caught up. The Department of Real Estate did something similar to that for a lot of realtors who had gone out of compliance with their education and their dues and things like that. And it worked well. They got a lot of the realtors back, back in action with it. I'm looking at the possibility of just getting a temporary one-year amnesty so people can bring their cars current and going forward be able to drive legally. Because I see every day going down the road, you have safety inspections. I've seen registrations out as much as five years. And the other thing too is, is that these people are selling these cars and saying, oh, the plates are stored. And I've got a lot of people that are calling me up and saying, hey, I went to the DMV and they're saying this person owed beaucoup bucks on past registration. And a lot of people who are buying these vehicles aren't aware of it. And so the city hasn't done a really good job either of telling these folks that they can store their plates if it's not running and be able to register when they get it running again. So I think between some of those, those issues that I think it would enable the city to actually be able to collect money and getting these people registered once again, rather than it's a straight out loss of money for them to be able to process abandoned vehicles and and that type of thing. And then people who are buying these vehicles who have expired registrations that are backed up, you know, three or four years, could be able to get it waived. That's another thing in the reso that the DMV here, you actually have to go to court and sue customer service to be able to get a waiver. You can get a waiver of back fees. You just have to go to court and file in civil court to do that. And most laypeople that I know, I mean, I draft legal forms all day. Most people won't go through the process of being able to draft a complaint, pay the sixty dollars to file it, go serve customer service, and then it's two months up the road before you get a court date. So there is a mechanism to do that, but I'm looking at something that would be kind of across the board. That'll enable people to come forward and be able to get their cars current rather than them taking up space on all of our parking curbs and being abandoned in different places and that type of thing. So I might not have like all the answers, but I'm kind of responding to some of the questions that some of my constituents have. And I actually have a lawsuit pending against customer service for a couple of vehicles that are, that fall within those types of guidelines. So I'll have a report on how that turns out. But I'm looking at trying to do something for just common people who don't have the savvy to be able to go to court and fight customer service on things like that. So you know, you can go and transfer title to a vehicle in another state and do it all by mail and pay only twenty nine dollars a year. South Dakota has as many people as Honolulu does or Oahu does and more roads and they're charging people twenty nine dollars a year for registration. Yet we're getting charged five hundred dollars a year and we got some of the worst roads in the nation. So I mean, that's kind of where it's at, but I do understand where you're coming from. And you know, everybody pays their fair share and then you go down the road and you're sitting next to some hoopdees that's, you know, way out of registration or even a nicer car. And a lot of times I've found that we just don't know what those people's story is. And if we did it once because of the COVID and because of people's job losses and things like that, it'll, you know, the state came across and said, we're going to do all these tax cuts to help out, you know, mom, pot, kettle and all these folks. But then what is the city doing for us, right? Is the city making it any easier for us financially? And the answer to that is no. So that's kind of where that is. And I've got a resolution that I'm going to try to get the board to vote on here soon along with the reso for simplified title transfers. But I appreciate you getting up and telling us about it. Thanks.
Thank you. At this time, seeing all the community concerns of board members wishing to speak, let's get to board business. For a approval of the written summaries of the written reports or, sorry, written summaries for the video record for Wednesday, April twenty fourth and May twenty second. The Chair's recommendation is to approve. Is there any objections or amendments from the board members at this time? Hearing no one wishing to amend, hearing no objections, the Chair calls it unanimous. Now let's go to Resolution B, urging the City and County of Honolulu to reinstate ordinance sixteen six relating to parking. This was the resolution that we have taken up before, but we ran out of time at the last board meeting. This is in order to assist those members in our community who had an exemption in the ordinance before to allow them to park in their roadway out in Eva. And we have the community members come up and provide testimony, including a community petition in support of all of those persons living along that roadway. Is there any, oh, sorry, the Chair's recommendation is to approve. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution before us?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public testimony at this time? Recognizing that we have heard from community members and received a community petition already to reinstate an ordinance that used to be in place. Hearing none at this time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say a ole. Anyone abstaining, please say kanalua. Hearing none, the Chair calls it unanimous. Now let's go to Resolution C, Supporting the Use of Sustainable Hawaiian Plant Landscapes and Increasing Food Security Towards Resilient Neighborhoods. This resolution is identifying all of the different types of plants that are native or introduced by kados to the areas of Honokai Hale, Makilua and Kapole. And we're asking all of the public and private entities to consider using them in their landscaping and also where appropriate to specifically use food-producing plants. We've had discussions now for a couple of months. Chair's recommendation is to approve. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. At this time, we invite public testimony. If there's any others wishing to speak, hearing no one coming up to testify on this. Any further discussion, board members? Again, we've talked about native landscaping and usage. We're just naming the specific ones that actually are native to Makilua, Honokai Hale and Kapole. Hearing no further discussion of the board. Any objections? Hearing no objections, the Chair calls it unanimous. Resolution D, Standing in Solidarity with Waikiki Neighborhood Board Number Nine and Calling for the Prohibition of Refused Collection of Prices Six AM in Waikiki. This is the resolution that was asked to our Transportation Chair for Waikiki for us to consider. We have had, we have considered community comments for and against and concerns. The Chair's recommendation at this time is to, is to refer this to the transportation committees to address the concerns that were raised previously. Unless someone wishes to move to take a vote at this time. Is a, you wish to take a vote at this time?
I'd like to take a vote.
Okay, so there's a request to take a vote at this time. The Chair recognizing concerns and for and against recommends that we not adopt this resolution at this time. I think it's premature. But given that the Transportation Chair would like us to vote, please make the motion for us to consider.
Make a motion.
Yeah, the Chair. So the Transportation Chair moves to adopt the resolution, standing in solidarity with Waikiki Neighborhood Board Number Nine and calling for the prohibition of refused collection prior to six AM in Waikiki. And it's been seconded. At this time, we invite public testimony. Hearing no public testimony wishing to be given, any further board discussion?
I just need to clarify, it's actually something I didn't want to adopt.
Okay, so what was the motion? The right, it's to defer, to refer?
Let me withdraw it then.
Okay, so the motion is to not adopt, so we'll just allow it to fall. But are you withdrawing your motion or are you amending your motion to not adopt?
I'm withdrawing the the motion if we're going to not adopt it.
Well, to clarify, the motion that I believe you made and was seconded is to adopt the resolution. The Chair's recommendation was that it was premature so that I recommended we not adopt the motion. But the motion is to adopt this at this time.
No, I take that back then. If you, I vote that we don't adopt it.
Okay, so to clarify, we're moving to not adopt Resolution D, Standing in Solidarity with Waikiki Neighborhood Board Number Nine and Calling for the Prohibition of Refused Collection Prior to Six AM in Waikiki. It's a second in concurrence to not adopt the the resolution at this time. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to not adopt. Any further discussion from the board?
Hey Chair, this is Logan. At this time, I would just recommend, rather than adopting a motion to not adopt, both Members Ferrera and Member Singleton rescind their motions to not adopt the resolution, allowing it to not be dead, basically. That way, if you guys did want to take it up at a future meeting, you'd be able to.
Correct. Okay, the Chair is totally fine with that. But if you're okay with that, Transportation Chair Ferrero and the second, that it can still be resurrected with appropriate changes in the future.
Yeah.
Yes. So the second was withdrawn, was the the motion withdrawn as well. I take that as a yes from McFerr. So the motion to not adopt is withdrawn. So for board business on Resolution D, we are deferring at this time. Now going to board business. E, Motion to Support the Creation of an Overdue Vehicle Registration Amnesty Program for the City and County of Honolulu. Is there a motion to adopt at this time? Yeah, okay, it's been moved to adopt. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been seconded by.
I have a question. I have a question, Board, Chair?
Yes, go right ahead.
So if we move to support the creation of the overdue vehicle registration amnesty, would I then follow it with the actual copy of a resolution?
So if this motion is passed, then what I would recommend is that the resolution that you are drafting be turned into a letter that will be forwarded to whoever needs to be forwarded to and that we vote on the letter at the next board meeting. If this motion fails, then you can bring the resolution in its complete form at the next board meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Everyone, not that clear, we just want to make sure that we are affirming the position that the Transportation Committee has taken, that the Chair has been informed of and wanting to affirm their work. And if we do not want to affirm their work regarding this, we should let them know now so that they stop wasting their time. So at this time, I would invite public testimony from those wishing to speak on the creation of an overdue vehicle registration amnesty program here in the City and County of Honolulu.
Chair, we have one in-house.
Okay, we'll allow that person to speak. Please introduce yourself and comment.
Hi, my name is Steve Loring again. I spoke about this earlier and after listening to the Transportation Chair, I guess I can soften my heart a little bit and understand. I mean, I'm not a rich person by far, but I pay mine every single year and I stand in line forever to get a safety check because there's only a certain amount of them around and you have to wait or make an appointment anyway. Perhaps instead of a total amnesty, if they're a year or two behind, whatever, perhaps they could work out a payment agreement with with DMV. Maybe they could pay fifty bucks a month or whatever they could could do instead of just plain amnesty, because that's, that's just not fair to me and everybody else that pays and follows the law like they're supposed to. Thank you.
Mahalo, community member, for your thoughts. Any others members of the community wishing to testify on this? The Chair recognizes that it is general in what we're asking for. So the nuances of what the testifier said can be considered in the letter or subsequent resolution if this fails to be considered in the letter to the appropriate parties or a future resolution can be addressing those concerns. But for context, the way that the Chair envisioned this, this would be a one-time special amnesty that other municipalities and states have done for vehicle registration after a particular event, say a natural disaster or some sort of other event in which a state or municipality will provide an amnesty for registration for a period of time. So not an ongoing amnesty program. Any other wishing to testify? Seeing none, let's go to the board for discussion and going first to the Transportation Chair to provide any comments he wishes to make regarding the amnesty program that he might consider seeking from the city.
Yeah, so what I can do is I could provide copies.
Yeah, so what I can do is I could provide copies of the proposed, uh, resolution. Uh, but like I said, this is a one-time type of deal where, uh, coming out of a very unique situation of COVID and a number of people on this island who were affected, who lost jobs, who worked in the service industry because their employers were shut down, um, in light of the state, uh, giving a tax cut to help residents. I'm thinking along the lines of city and county, being able to do something for people who are past due. Um, ideally, we would suspend registration for everyone, including the gentleman who is paying his fair share as well as myself. Um, but I think we'll be helping some of the people that truly need that type of, of help that they need their car to get to work and currently they're driving it. And I, I commute to the Capitol every day and I lose count of all the, uh, vehicles that are out of compliance and, um, you know, it isn't like I'm seeing Mercedes Benz's and Rolls Royces with expired tags. Uh, so um, in light of the state doing what they're doing, I'm suggesting this, uh, for city and county to be able to help us with our excessive, uh, registration fees that some people who are past due on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion, um, from the board members?
Chair.
Yep, chair recognizes board member Michaela Lindstone.
Just a question for the transportation, um, committee, um, lead. Would you consider a payment plan as, um, community members Steve suggested?
I think in light of what Hiko does for people who get past due on their electric bill, is setting up some sort of a payment plan, uh, if it could be administered without it being excessively expensive or creating another bureaucracy. I think that's something that, uh, the Department of Customer Service could implement so that, you know, people could have more of a, an account, so to speak, rather than coming in and having to pay a flat fee every year, that, uh, they have a, a balance and you pay towards it when you can. I think that's probably a more superior idea rather than just writing off, you know, the whole amount because, you know, there probably are some people who've taken advantage of us being short 450 police officers and knowing they can drive around with expired tags and, and not get hit for it. So I think that's a wonderful idea. Um, I think that's something that we should probably put as the forefront.
Okay, um, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, um, unless there is a desire to move forward on this now, our transportation chair, I would recommend that we um, defer action and take back the comments received from fellow board members and community members and then see if we can incorporate that into the resolution that you have drafted. And then bring it back to, uh, our board for consideration after incorporating those, um, agreed upon amendments.
I'll redraft it. Thank you.
Okay. So the chair's recommendation is to defer on this item at this time on board business E. So we're deferring it back to, or referring it back to the transportation committee, excuse me, um, to consolidate into a resolution for consideration in the future. Is the, is there any objection to the chair's recommendation to referring this matter to the transportation committee? Hearing none, um, the chair calls it the referral to the transportation committee, um, unanimous. And now we.
Hey Chair, this is Logan. If we could, uh, just get the, uh, make sure that the first and the second is, um, rescinded. Yeah, just because the, the motion is on the table. Yeah, even with the recommendation.
Oh, excuse me. Are the motion, the move on and the second there, uh, agreeable to withdraw? I see yes. Okay, so they have been withdrawn. And the chair's recommendation is to refer now to the committee. Is there an objection? I see no bobbling heads, so that's a no. So it goes back to them. Okay, thank you, Logan, for keeping us procedurally straight. Now we get to go to the committee reports, um, starting off with transportation committee.
Mine will be incredibly brief. I've been lathering on for quite a while here. Uh, the only things I've, I've kind of got in the works right now is, uh, resolutions. There's one that I've got for, uh, simplified title transfers at customer service. I'm going to be talking to the director of customer service and, uh, fine tuning that one a little bit. Amnesty, uh, registration amnesty. We've agreed that I'm going to redraft it and present it. And then, uh, the third resolution I've got is a project injunction for the development that we've been talking about because of the traffic impact and, uh, the lack of there being a Makikilo exit that will take the traffic load off the Kapole exit. But that's all I've got for now.
Thank you. Now let's go to the Parks and Recreation Committee Chair, Michaela Lindstone.
On June 10th, we had a meeting with the mayor's office, the director of parks, um, some community organizations and some, um, also some service providers that provide services to the, um, houseless population. So that occurred on June 10th, that this meeting was supposed to occur in December, but thanks to, um, council member Tupola, she, um, really, it, it kept getting canceled by the, um, by the parks, um, people. And so, um, but she kept on them. And, um, after several other canceled meetings, we actually had the meeting on June 10th. Um, I can't say that any solutions were made, um, all the, the issues that have been brought up here at our neighborhood board were laid out on the table, especially, um, with the house, the increasing houses population at, um, Kapole Regional Park. The city really kept to their two hour, I mean, right at 12 o'clock they left. Whereas we had a strong, um, showing of community organizations and people who actually volunteer at the park wanted to stay and really talk about solutions. So council member Tupola stayed and, and we really, um, you know, kind of brainstormed some solutions. Um, I'm not sure if parks will, will, you know, they, they listened. Um, I don't know what they're going to come back at. I, 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 I don't know because the deputy director of parks has just resigned. And I, I know that's a big blow to, um, DPR with, um, Keho Poo resigning. Um, she was a big part of, of movement. Um, but we will hope for our best. Um, council member Tupola is really on it and, um, hopefully we can, we can see something. But they listened to all our concerns. They were there. We laid it all out. And so we'll, we'll bring, um, we'll bring more updates back as we hear them. Mahalo.
Okay, mahalo Chair, for the work and advocacy that you're doing with Parks and Recreation. Appreciate it. Um, Dr. Killney Dudley has, um, undergone a recent accident and, uh, and he is at home recovering and he is insured to communicate to me to let you all know that he is appreciative of the thoughts and well wishes, uh, for his healthy recovery. Okay, now, um, for state monthly reports with the last two minutes that we have, um, I do see Uncle Gordon Pang and Meg Turner on. So each of you get a minute. If you want it. Uncle Gordon or Meg, if you wanted to share with us, uh, please go right in.
Good evening, um, love, Chair, Vice Chair, members and fellow West Oahu residents. I'm Gordon Pang, by day, the Housing Information Officer for the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation. And once a month by night, I'm your representative to Governor Green's administration. I'm here to listen and send your messages to the governor and hopefully find some answers to your questions. Regarding Hakukapole, as noted earlier, the developers of Hakukapole won the right to master plan the 20, 27 or so acres at Farrington Highway in Fort Barrett. I posted the for action in the chat a little earlier. Um, so you folks can take a look at what exactly was approved by the HHFTC board. Um, this is also online and if you can't find it, email me. I'll, I'll send you the link. Um, again, as, has been said earlier, this is a very early stage in the process. It has a very long way to go before any construction is done. As Mr. Simonic mentioned, he and his partners need to obtain many more entitlements. Uh, so follow them from here. Ask every question you can think of. I would suggest doing it in writing. Representative Suzha said she's gathering the questions. I went to the link that, uh, that, uh, board member, uh, Tiara, Tiara, Tiari had, had, had linked to. Um, so yes, that's a very good idea. Um, maybe the neighborhood board can put together a list of questions as well. You know, have everything documented. Uh, they were here tonight and I think that's a good sign that they intend to be here and are willing to at least hear your concerns. Give them a chance to respond to those concerns and, uh, feel free to email me as well. Um, gordon.pang@hawaii.gov G O R D O N dot P A N G at hawaii dot G O V. Uh, I know time's running late, so I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Mahalo, Uncle Gordon.
Unless you have questions.
Yes, uh, there, um, there are questions, but I will ask that you take them offline, um, after the Olelo, um, um, everyone needs to go.
Yep, thank you.
So take them offline or send them an email or send them to myself at makala.paris@gmail.com and I'll get it to Uncle Gordon. Uh, okay. Meg, did you want a minute since you're still on at 10 o'clock?
Thank you. I, I, I included the senators newsletters in the chat. Thank you very much.
Thank you, um, Senator Gabbers for having there and Meg Turner for being here with us.
Hey Chair, you're, uh, I think you might have muted on accident.
Whoa, uh, thank you for that. Um, we are at the end of our board business for this evening and the final announcement is that the Makikilo Kapole Honakai Hall and Neighborhood Board's next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, July 24th. Okay, and with that, uh, we are now adjourned. Mahalo Nui Loa and mahalo to Olelo for staying there strong with us and mahalo to Logan and the rest of the team for making sure that we stayed on track this evening. Be mindful, everyone, there's an uptick in COVID. Please be healthy and safe and care for each other and the community. Mahalo, aloha and malamopono.